Good evening, everyone. Welcome to our special meeting. It is Tuesday, July 2nd. It's 5:30 PM. And this is a special meeting, so we will start with the roll call. Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Wei?
Here.
Vice Mayor Fruen?
Here.
Mayor Mohan?
Here. Okay, so the subject for today's special meeting is to accept the Enterprise Risk Assessment Final Report and the Fiscal Year 2024-25 Internal Audit Work Plan. Madam City Manager, the staff report?
Yes. Thank you, Mayor, for introducing the item. We do have a Ministry of Service manager, I'm sorry, director, and also our lovely Moss Adams consultant here, Colleen, to be with us today to give a presentation on both items.
So, good evening, Mayor, City Council. I'll be handing the presentation over to Colleen Rosillis here in just a moment to take us through the Enterprise Risk Assessment and the Recommended Fiscal Year 2024-25 Audit Plan. In addition to Colleen being with us this evening, we also have Inos Schmidt, who's our Chair of our Audit Committee. Audit Committee did review these two items and forward them for council's consideration at their last Audit Committee meeting. So with that, I will hand it over to Colleen.
Great. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Did this turn on? It says it's on. Okay, there we go. Okay. Good evening, everyone. All right. So, for the record, Colleen Rosillis, I'm a partner with Moss Adams. I'm your engagement partner for our internal audit work program, so I provide quality assurance, I oversee the whole program, and I work with all of you, one-on-one, as needed, as we go throughout every year's internal audit program. So we're here tonight to do two things. The first is, take a look at our Enterprise Risk Assessment results, and then the second is based on the results of that risk assessment, approve our work program for this fiscal year, which started yesterday. So, Happy New Year. I hope you all had the same celebration that we had. As a reminder, we have been retained as your internal auditor to reduce risks, improve controls, and improve performance and compliance, ultimately thinking about, how can we get the city better aligned with best practices? We perform our work for you under professional standards, either generally accepted government auditing standards or AICPA consulting standards. What that means is that we are objective and independent. So, some of you have seen this before. This is a graphic from the Institute for Internal Auditors that shows the role of council on top, so your goal is to provide that oversight, to be ultimately responsible for compliance and risk management in the city. Management's role is to implement policy and strategic direction, and our job is to provide that independent and objective assurance that the city is moving in the direction that we want to go. Over on the right-hand side, you'll see those external auditors, so that's kind of like going to the dentist, and we're sort of like brushing and flossing. And, I guess you're, I'm not going to go any further than that. Okay, so, when we think about our internal audit work program, there are a number of inputs. We conduct enterprise assessments. The city had a very detailed internal controls review done in 2019. We have done two enterprise risk assessments. We also look at data, we watch council meetings, we gather information from everyone, employees, residents, council members, to understand what do we need to do, what direction is the city going, where are the risks? And then we issue reports, we also monitor the Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Hotline and triage that. We also monitor corrective actions, and we'll talk a little bit more about implementation and validation as well, as we go through this work tonight. So, we've been your internal auditor since 2020, and so we have done two enterprise risk assessments, we've done two internal controls projects, we've really been focused on performance and efficiency projects in the last three to four years, and that's really because of the risk areas that were identified in the last risk assessment. We have done a tremendous amount of policy work for the city, so we've reviewed 133 policies and counting, and that ranges from really deep finance work to currently, we're doing some work across the whole city, looking at the full policy environment. Since its inception, the Ethics Hotline has received 21 reports, and when we come back to you next year, we'll have a report here on the bottom that shows how many recommendations we have validated that they've been implemented. So we'll be able to show that progress to you all into the Audit Committee in our annual reporting. So as I mentioned, we conducted our, oops, we conducted our risk assessment this year. We typically do this every three years, and so we started this project in December. It's a point-in-time risk assessment, and it essentially looks at, here are a bunch of different categories that are cross-cutting across the city operations that might impact your ability to serve your mission, which is to serve your community. We identify a risk level from low to high, and as part of that risk level, there are a number of different components. One is the level of potential impact of that negative event on city operations, another is the likelihood of that event, what the city's level of preparedness is, so what have we done to make sure that we could respond to or potentially mitigate this action, and then what is the risk trajectory? We identify all of these different areas when we go through the process and show them to you, because it's important to understand, in a resource-constrained public environment, how are we going to focus our time and efforts? And so if something has an already downward trajectory, do we need to focus if it is something that might be a lower risk, but the trajectory is increasing? So it helps us to balance our decision-making there. We identify in the report in each category the potential strategies for reducing risk. Those are things that you may take as a governing body, that we may take as internal audit. Many of them are things for staff to undertake. And then we always note residual risk, because we don't live in a risk-free environment. Great example would be information technology. Cybersecurity risk is very high. It's exceptionally high for public entities with the amount of data that passes in and out of the city, and so even if we do everything that we can, we're still going to have a pretty high residual risk, and that's simply because that's the world that we exist in. We want to make sure that that is part of our framework and understanding, so that we don't set our expectations unrealistically when we are implementing risk-mitigating actions. So this slide here shows you the results of our risk assessment. The city has one high-risk area and four moderate-to-high risk areas. When you look at the 2020 risk assessment, and we do have a table in the front of the full report that shows a comparison, we see a changing risk environment, which isn't a surprise. Basically, a third stayed the same, a third went down, a third went up. And the real driver of the city's risk ratings that went up were, is the city's fiscal environment, because the funding situation has changed so significantly since 2020. For those risk areas that went down, it was really a focused effort on things like policies and procedures, and alignment of operations with best practices, particularly around organizational stability, and that is, I would say, a huge credit to the current management team. That's something that they have really leaned into over the last couple of years. And before I get into the risk results, I just want to note a couple of strengths. So as I mentioned, development of policies and procedures, standardization of policies and procedures, and even just things like, are they all in the same place? Can everybody access them? Does everybody know where to go? That's really, really important, and those are things that can fall by the wayside, because it can feel like it's, you know, busy work when you've got, you're serving the public. There has been a huge focus on that. Leadership stability, and really focusing on how do we make sure that we help to retain folks, and how do we deliver on the city's strategy? And then, actually, the institution of the internal audit function. So that has reduced risk, not to pat ourselves on the back, but, you know, the city entered into internal audit because there were high-profile, there was a high-profile event, right? And that is something that we wanted to really take intentional acts to reduce risk and to prevent that from happening again. And so you'll see across the risk assessment that areas like ethics have fallen down pretty low, accounting and finance went down to low to moderate, and so that's really a credit to the council and to city management for embracing having an internal auditor and actually implementing recommendations as well. So the first high-risk area, you are familiar with this, is the city's financial environment due to the change in sales tax revenue. One thing that I do want to note is that preparedness is relatively high for a high-risk area, because you have risk mitigation strategies in place, you're constantly planning, forecasting, reforecasting, and you're looking at other opportunities to diversify the revenue base, but this has a very high impact on city operations as well. Not just today, but the potential impact of additional funding or economic impacts could really impact the city. Another thing that I do want to say about this, though, is that it makes you pretty similar to most cities in California and on the West Coast. Lots and lots of municipal governments have been resource-constrained for a really long time, and so you're in a position of having to deal with that today, but you're in good company, and there are a lot of things that you can learn from your peers as well. Most of the cities that we work with have funding and economics in that higher-risk area. In our moderate-to-high risk categories, we have four areas, and again, those are mostly driven, again, by the city's financial profile. So the capital improvement program, it's really a reflection of that lack of ability to invest in all of the capital needs. In addition, the city lacks a long-term capital improvement plan, and not having that plan, this was something that came up in the last risk assessment, too, it can cause you to pivot on your priorities, to not spend funds as intentionally, and when you are limited in terms of the dollars that you can spend on maintenance, on any potential improvements or new infrastructure, you have to be very, very thoughtful and deliberate about that. And so having a five-year plan is a best practice, and it will help you to stay aligned, and not necessarily be subject to political winds. It also allows you to more deliberately go after grant funding or other partnerships when you already have that plan in place. Compliance and financial reporting is in this risk category as well, and this is about needing to continue to update those policies and procedures. The two areas that I want to call out are human resources, and that's in progress, and then grants management, and you'll see that in our proposed program coming up in a few slides. Human resources, so improvements have been made in this area. You have a small HR team, and they have been focused on updating policies and procedures, and also improving the recruiting process, but that work is still ongoing, and there are a couple of areas that are important to note. Again, this is very common when we have financial difficulties, succession planning, retention, employee morale, right? People want to make sure that their jobs are here, and so that can cause some instability in the organization. And then finally, planning. So, the city lacks a strategic plan. That's an area that it is important, I think, now more than ever, to have a longer-term plan, to make sure that everyone is aligned. Again, you have a resource-constrained environment, we have very limited sort of fund funds, and so how do we align and be really intentional about what we do going forward? I won't cover the lower-risk categories, but I'm happy to answer questions about them. We did rate you on 19 categories, and I want to be respectful of your time and allow you to ask me questions. So, we have four projects for our internal audit program for this fiscal year. The first is an internal controls review of the grants management process, so based on the risk assessment results and discussions with staff. We want to take a look at controls across grants management. It is a decentralized process. It's an area that's particularly important if we want to be able to leverage grants and to make sure that we're compliant. You know, we certainly have had clients who have been asked to return grant funding, because somewhere out in a department, reporting hasn't been as good as it could be, so making sure that we've got that reporting, review, administration, and everything is aligned, and that finance has a great handle on grants management, policies and procedures as well. Then we have a process review of the special revenue fund. So, we want to document that process, and then also do testing of how the last year's accounting was for special revenue funds. We had some coverage of that, and we know that that's an opportunity to make sure that we're doing things as well as we can. And then, recommendation validation. So this was always part of the internal audit plan, but we wanted to make sure we had some projects in the bank before we got started on this, and so now we're three years in, and we can get started. And you have audit status update on your agenda later tonight. So the purpose of this is to take all of your internal audit findings and any external audit or other related findings and recommendations, put them together in one tracking mechanism, and then work with staff to provide regular updates on when they have been implemented. And that will include us validating, so if we say, okay, you need a policy here, it's not just, yes, we have a policy, we want to see the policy, and we want to make sure it's actually in place. We'll work with the Audit Committee and with staff on that process, so that you have a systematic process to have that transparency and accountability, and so that none of our reports or anything similar that is done at the city sits on a shelf. And then the last project here is ongoing internal audit services, so that's just managing the program, managing the Fraud, Waste, and Abuse Hotline. We meet with staff on a bi-weekly basis to talk about the program and to get updates, and then we attend meetings like this. So, with that, I'm going to stop sharing my screen, and happy to answer any questions that you have.
Thank you very much, Colleen. If there are any questions for staff from council? Councilmember Moore?
Okay, yes. Thank you, Colleen, for the report. I had sent in some questions, and I don't know if staff has had a chance to look at them, but I was, I was thinking about this risk assessment in kind of a, maybe a different way, but my question was with regards to total quality management, because this seems to be, and especially when you're talking about doing the validation, that we are looking at a total quality management system here, and that you're basically our quality department that we've kind of outsourced. Is that, is that a fair assessment?
Yeah, I mean, I think that that's a great analogy, that we're thinking about always trying to get better, be more efficient, reduce our risk, be more compliant, improve our controls. So, it absolutely is a part of continuous improvement and that type of accountability. Yeah.
Okay, and so with that in mind, I think, as we saw when the first risk assessment came out, it was somewhat politicized, and in light of the total quality management, we certainly don't want to have any of the individuals, our stakeholders, to fear this process, because of, you know, members of the public talking about whatever they see in the report and using it that way. With that in mind, I was wondering if we could describe this perhaps, not so much as risk assessment, but more in terms of process improvement or quality management in that, through that lens, if that would make a difference in the process and perhaps get more buy-in? Because I think most people have heard of lean six sigma and total quality management, but we're not really hearing those terms with regards to the risk assessment, so I'm just wondering if that has been considered?
That's not something that is typically, I mean, a risk assessment is, auditors use that language all the time, right? And in fact, your external auditor, the beginning of every internal audit project, we do a mini-risk assessment that says, what's the risk for this project? Because our work is driven by risk and risk mitigation. What I would say, and it's something that can be hard to translate to the public, is this is a point-in-time, and the reason we do it is to ultimately reduce our risk. So, even though it might tell us things that we don't want to know or we're not proud of, the fact that we have it here, that it's a public document, that we're talking about it, actually is a good thing. And our risk assessment is, if you have all had the pleasure of reading it, it's, you know, 70 pages long, it's really detailed, there's, all the information is out there, because we want it to be able to stand on its own. If there are other questions about the information that's in it, we're always very happy to answer that, and that's part of our job as your internal auditor.
Okay, thank you. So, we really are doing the plan-to-check-act process, and then we're doing it again, and this is, so when will we see another risk assessment that's comprehensive like this in the future?
We typically do them every three years, unless there are reasons why we would do them more frequently. So, sometimes we'll do them every year, depending on the risk profile of the agency. Sometimes we go as many as five years, and it really just depends on your appetite and what our feeling is about when we need to do them. But it's usually every three years.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you for being here. And, so, I have a question about your assessment process. So, as you mentioned, it's a point-in-time assessment. And for council members, we had one-hour interview, I think back in January, maybe, and it was an informal interview with no questions provided to us ahead of time for us to think about it. And questions come and go, I don't even remember what I answered, and this kind of assessment a lot of times depends on what came up the week before or the two weeks before, but I can really provide a deeper assessment of, say, last six months, or of, say, different areas that may not have come up in the past two weeks. And I'm wondering, is that the same kind of method being done with, for example, interview with staff, also a point in time? Then I wonder how accurate is this kind of informal interview assessment? Is there other ways to assess, so we can have a more meaningful result?
That's a great question. So, there's two parts here. One is about the point in time, and the other is about our interview process or the data that goes into a risk assessment. So, risk assessments are simply point-in-time, because risk is always changing. We have to pick a time. If we try to make it until the minute the report is issued, then we're going to be constantly changing and updating the data, so we have to pick that, and we are very clear in the language about the period of time that it covers, because even since we have issued this, there may have been some mitigating actions that have been taken, or there could have been a court ruling, or there could have been, you know, a Supreme Court decision about encampments, right? Like, there are things that impact how we do business. So, we just use that point-in-time, understanding that there's going to have to be some flexibility, and that's, again, why we provide as much context as possible. With respect to the process of actually determining the risk areas and rating the risks, we do interview all council members, we interview all members of management, we do an all-staff survey, but we use data to back up everything. So you're right that we ask, we have open-ended questions, and we typically don't prepare folks, except with an introductory paragraph, and that's in part because we don't want you to come planned with your talking points, and then we don't have time to follow our noses. It's important that we ask those exploratory questions. And sometimes we meet with folks and follow up afterwards because of things that we learned, but everything that we hear, we have to back up with data. So what you don't see on our end is a tremendous document request that staff has to fulfill, the data that we look at, and the numbers that actually drive these risk ratings, but that's all part of our process.
So, you don't, I mean, with any of the organization, have you ever used different methods? For example, with some written questionnaires, or so that people can think about the different risk areas that the organization may have, rather than off the top of my head within that one hour of interview?
Yeah, and we've certainly done things like provided the risk categories in advance, without necessarily saying, here's the specific questions that we'll ask you, and when we get around to doing this next time, we can do that.
And another question is, I think we are a public-facing organization, and our risk a lot of times has to do with the public we are serving, but this process, it seems we leave the public out. None of the public who regularly attends a meeting, for example, were ever interviewed. So have you tried to interview customers in this kind of enterprise risk assessment?
We typically don't. If the city does customer surveys, that's some of the data that we will request, whether it's individual departments or functions doing surveys, like planning often has customer surveys, things like that, or if you do a statistically significant resident survey, we use that data. But you all are elected representatives of the community, and that's the number-one thing, and that's part of all the conversations we have. What are you hearing from the community? What's important? What rises to your level? That's something that we all talk about. And I also, we watch your council meetings, we read the news, we check social media of our clients, so those are things that we look at to kind of get that pulse as well.
Okay, so if the city does some survey, customer satisfaction survey, that could be taken into account?
Yes.
But we haven't done this kind of survey, I think, for a few years. Another question is effectiveness of the Fraud, Waste, Abuse Hotline, how effective it has been?
So, the number-one, number-one outcome of having an ethics hotline is that it is a preventative measure for fraud, waste, or abuse. So there are different types of controls, preventative, detective, and so it gives the perception that there are controls and a process in place, and so that helps people to feel comfortable reporting, and it also makes people think twice. So, I would say the best outcome of the hotline, since we have been administering it, since it's been in place, is that there has not been anything uncovered that has risen to a level of being a criminal or seriously ethical action. We've had not a ton of activity. I think you saw, we've had about 20 reports to the hotline over a couple of years. That's about normal for a city your size, and we get plenty of reports that are directly related to how the city operates, right? And so there are things that we follow up with, with the city attorney, with the city manager, sometimes with the Audit Committee Chair or the mayor, but I think the greatest outcome is that we haven't actually uncovered a fraud, which is good.
Thank you. Councilmember Wei? Five minutes, please.
Thank you, Mayor. I have a couple of questions. The first one is, back to Councilmember Chow's question about your investigation, your interviews, and how you compare the report. It sounds like you have industry standards to follow, and you might have newer strategies coming next time, but you don't go in blind. You do, attend our meetings, and, you know, collect data, go to social media. Is that a standard practice for firms like your, you know, enterprise risk like you?
Yeah, so enterprise risk management is an industry standard defined by an organization called COSO. They have a standard enterprise risk management methodology. It applies to all industries, but we tailor it to the public sector, and we tailor every risk assessment to each client, depending on your operating environment. So, it's kind of a combination of those things. We absolutely use our industry standards, but we also are making sure that we are tailored to what you all need as well.
Okay, great. And to follow up with that, so, would you say that the industry standard you use when you do a risk assessment for organizations, they're pretty valid and good data, and that you believe that these are the datas that organization like us can use and really improve our risk, you know, eliminate our risk?
Yeah, and there are some really great industry standard-setting entities, like the Government Finance Officers Association, ICMA, the League of California Cities is a great place. There are tons and tons of very good resources on municipal government, municipal finance, and so that's where we really ground ourselves. There are other organizations that are focused also on innovation in the public sector and that type of service delivery, and so those are also things that we keep an eye on as well.
Great, and I'm particularly interested, when you say, whether you threw the interview or you back with data. Can you explain a little bit more how you, you know, back with data?
Yeah, so just because someone said it doesn't mean that it's true. And so we work really hard to figure out if we can validate that. And if we hear it from enough people, but there's no data backing, that's when we talk to folks, we might talk to the city manager, or city attorney, or the relevant department or program manager, in order to understand, okay, we heard this, how can we actually prove that this is or is not true? And so we'll dig into that. You may see in some of our reports either survey results, or we will say, you know, staff says, staff reports, we might have that information in there, but that's not scientific. That's, but it's part of government auditing standards. Everything has to have sufficient evidence to come to you and to be reported.
Okay, so my second question is, you know, this is not the first time we're engaging you and do the risk assessments. Whenever you do a new one every three years or five years, you will backtrack to what has been done and verify whether those risks have been mitigated or not. Would you do that?
So, what we do is, we again, look at that point in time. So we're not necessarily saying, let's go back to 2020 and talk about what's happened since then, but we do compare when we get to that point in our analysis, because we have done an assessment for you already. We do compare those risk levels, and we do a little bit of sort of self-inquiry. We also assign different staff to the risk assessment. So, while I worked on that first risk assessment, I didn't really do very much, except interview council on this risk assessment, and the project manager and the analyst were new people to take a fully fresh eye at the city's risks, and so that helps us to make sure that we're not biased in our assessment as well.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Vice Mayor Fruen?
Fairly quick here. You mentioned under planning and strategy that we should adopt a long-term strategic plan. That sounds like something that would be an excellent work program item, so I guess my question is, how time-intensive would you expect it to be?
Yeah, that's a really good question. So, I think a strategic plan process, if a consultant does it, takes about six months. It can take nine months, depending on how much community engagement that you do. You can also do it as part of an in-house effort, if you have the capacity. I'm not sure that you have the capacity at the moment, but it's good to always have a facilitator that has that experience with community engagement, because you definitely want that when we think about things like the city's values. because you definitely want that when we think about things like the city's values and making sure that our goals are aligned with what the community wants. You're going into an election year and so I would not start a strategic planning process while folks are campaigning. I would wait until a new council is seated in order to get started with that process because newly-elected officials also typically want to put their stamp on a strategic plan.
Yeah, that, that all makes plenty of sense. Next year is also when we would revise the, the work program since we're on a, a two-year cycle. And it'll be the 70th anniversary of the city. Seems like a good time to go through that process. What species of consultant would you expect us to engage for that sort of work without naming names?
There, I mean, there is lots of folks who do strategic planning. We do strategic planning, but we wouldn't do that as, as your internal auditor. When you get to that point, you would issue a request for proposals and that's certainly something that we could take a look at as you go through that process, if this, if staff would like us to.
Okay. Um, and then you recommended that we move to a five-year capital improvement program. You know, I'm just wondering how we would best align that with the, the budget and the two-year work program cycle since they sort of feed into each other. And then also the comment that you just made about new council members generally wanting to be able to put their stamp on things. If you're on five years, there's the potential that if you only served one term, you would never really get to provide sufficient input on the plan.
Yeah, well, a CIP gets updated annually with the budget process. And so it's essentially a feeder into the budget process. And we typically see a CIP process start a little before the budget process starts. But the first thing that you do is identify all of your existing projects and you also identify, okay, what's our threshold for what's a capital project versus what might be handled as a smaller maintenance project or, or small works, what we would call that. And then you go through the process of identifying criteria to prioritize them, identifying out potential outsized funding, you know, things that might cause you to jump the criteria if you did get a grant, stuff like that. So council members have a lot of opportunity over the course of a year to put your stamp on a capital program, no matter what, because projects take such a long time too. And so it's really about saying, okay, if we commit to something, we're going to stick to it. Or we're going to say, this doesn't fit within our criteria and we have other priorities like life safety might be more important than beautification, right? And that, those are really easy things to compare, but you can get more into the details as well. Um, it's really just about focusing your time and effort. And, and I think a lot of capital stuff, a lot of contracts and plans go in front of you. So council members will still feel like they have a part in it.
Okay, that's, that's fair. With respect to the need for additional succession planning in HR, is, is there something in particular that, that council can do? Beyond just improving governance, I was very happy to see that we've, we've dropped in risk there and that that work has, has borne fruit. But is there anything specific that, that we can adopt as policy or something that we can go do to improve succession planning?
You know, there's, I would say what's within your control is to work with the city manager to make sure that staff has what they need to do their jobs. That's how they're going to feel most comfortable staying. We understand that it's an uncertain environment. Um, and so just making sure they have what they need and that they feel good about working here, that's basically what you can do.
Okay, thank you so much.
I had a question. Uh, we, this year, because of, uh, budget cuts and service level reductions, we did reduce Moss Adams' contract. And so, uh, so my question is, uh, relative to the work that, your work plan of last year, what, what, where will we take, uh, where will we feel, feel the impact of the cuts this year?
That's a great question. We're doing a little bit less work than last year, um, because we have less budget. Last year, we did two really big projects. We did the risk assessment and a citywide policy review. You'll see that we're doing three kind of smaller projects this year. But we work with programs that range from $750,000 a year down to $50,000 a year. And it really is just about us focusing, making sure we're using our time and effort in the most productive way to get at those most important things, which is why we really focused on those areas that address your highest risk areas. Um, and so if I could wave a magic wand, I would do a lot more. I'm sure that everyone who works at the city would do a lot more if they could wave a magic wand. But this is the environment that we're in. I don't feel like we're exposing you to any additional risk by reducing our budget at this time.
Okay, and I'm also assuming that if something unexpected or unforeseen happens during the course of the year, you are not going to let the, the budget constraints hinder you in your analysis?
Yes. So in that case, we'd go to the audit committee, we would come to council in collaboration with staff and identify, do we want to adjust our plan in the middle if we have the flexibility to do that? Or do we want to look for funds from another source in order to address something? And that's something that comes up all the time.
Okay. And my last question, uh, the fraud, waste, and abuse policy. I, I noticed in your survey of, uh, employees, city staff, that the, uh, that the, uh, there was a significant increase in the awareness of city staff to how to handle, uh, these cases. Is that, and, and because this is a relatively new program, what, uh, what was the impetus to, to make that happen? Is it training? Is it just awareness?
Yeah, so there's required training now. So we provide all-staff training that was recorded, um, as well as we provided training to, um, council members, um, in kind of smaller groups as we, um, rolled out that program. We do training on a regular basis to make sure that folks know. And that policy is out there, it's on the city's website, it's available, so folks should know. And that's because of a concerted effort as part of rolling out the program.
I would just add to that, it's part of our onboarding process now as well. So every new employee that starts with the city has to view the training video and sign off on the policy as well. So I think it's also front of mind right when employees start as well. This is something that's important to us. This is a resource or a tool that's available to them as well.
Yep.
And that's across the board, every employee who starts with the city?
Correct.
Excellent. Thank you very much.
Um, councilmember Moore, did you, you, you will get another chance, but did you want to?
Yeah, I did have a quick question.
Okay, we have, you have about one minute, I think.
About one minute, 20. Um, so I'm looking at the demographics, um, of the staff page, 24. And I see that it's, you've compared the staff demographics to the county. Um, and when, and you do have the statement that ideally staff demographics would more closely mirror community demographics. Um, is there a reason why the county as a whole was selected, um, versus just the city? I, I can think of reasons why it might, might have been selected, but if we're trying to look at just our community, then our, our demographics are even further skewed, much further skewed actually than the county. So I was wondering if you had some comments on that?
Yeah, that's a good question. So a couple of things. One is the county-level data was available for the, as recent as we could get it from the American Community Survey and it didn't drill down to the city level. So that's one, uh, piece of information. Um, the other is that your employees are more likely to come from a broader area than just the city. And so when we think about, um, employee demographics, yes, if you wanted to match the city's population, that would be a great goal. What's more feasible and practical is probably thinking more about the county because that's a broader range of where we might get our staff. Does that make sense?
Yeah, it does. Thank you.
Vice Mayor Fruein?
Super quickly.
Two minutes, I think.
I think it's actually just 30 seconds, but I'll, I'll confine myself to that. In the things that are on your work program for the year, was there anything in particular that you wish you could have included but that had to be left by the wayside because of budget?
Hmm, is there?
I think we hit the big items. Um, I know grants have been a big one for a while that we wanted to look at that process that had been there. So I think we've done a lot of good work in the past few years to get to where we are on the policy piece. We'll have the citywide policy audit coming before council in, um, in September. So I think, um, from, from my perspective, I think we've touched on the most important pieces aside from the funding and economics, which we're, we're working through, right? As we've had several meetings on the city's budget, um, I think we're, we're hitting the big areas.
Yeah, I mean, I'd love to be able to provide some assistance to HR because they have a lot on their plates, um, through either process improvement or policy support or other types of capacity support that would help to reduce risk. Um, things like succession planning templates, you know, stuff like that. That would be a nice to have. But, uh, that's also something that can happen next year.
Great, thank you so much.
Thank you. Uh, let's go to, uh, public comments. Uh, Madam City Clerk, do we have any cards?
Yes, Mayor, I see three hands, well, I see two hands. I see two or two to three hands raised virtually. Um, I don't see any currently in community hall, but we, I see one card over there, so.
Let's go with the Zoom calls.
Okay, so we'll begin with Donna Austin, followed by Claudio Bono, followed by San Ar. Yeah, so, so welcome, Donna.
Okay, I'm, I'm muted. Uh, my name is Donna Austin and I would highly recommend accepting this enterprise risk assessment, uh, final report. It's really, really, I think, of, of value to the city. And they accept the internal audit work plan and it's just total quality control. Uh, I, I'm just impressed with, um, all that they do. And I think it's something that, uh, eventually hope we can adopt our own strategic plan and really know where we're going. Uh, it, it's just a great, um, capital improvement, long-term. It's just, it's great and I highly recommend it. And that's all. Thank you. Thank you.
Thank you, Donna. Next we have Claudio Bono, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Claudio.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor Fruein, councilmembers, city manager Wu, city attorney Jensen, city staffman and clerk, and to all fellow resident, good evening. My name is Claudio Bono, Cupertino resident for over 10 years now, and I will speak on my behalf. I am noting that the HR risk, uh, category, moderate to high, it should be low. But again, I understand that I'm not attacking, I'm just stating the obvious. Am I surprised? Not really, especially from me attending last council meeting. Uh, it was obvious that some council members focused more on attacking the staff rather than supporting them. Supporting, supporters like Rhonda Frye, even Gaspar, I mentioned. When it was mentioned that city staff security and safety was important, so am I surprised? No, not really. So in this case, like councilmember Moore said, it was her fiduciary responsibility to question staff yet has no issue suing the city. Same with councilmember Chow. Seems only her can do the job and so keep on wasting people's time, including questioning professionals. So, however, it needed to be said. And the next one is also for all the naysayer that says the accounting and finance and fraud is low. So it's very good. It tells residents that our mayor and team and staff are doing their job and we are on track on that. So as they taught me in English, there is a word that says eat that. I'm here to simply request that a city council accept the enterprise risk assessment's final report and accept the 2024 fiscal year internal audit work plan. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudio. Next we have San Ar. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan and councilmembers. Um, I'd like to speak on the ERP drawbacks in Cupertino. I think the audit report touches on that. Specifically, I believe Cupertino is one of the few cities that does not use an ERP system that is specifically built for municipal systems or municipal cities and governance by local cities. Let me give you a few examples. I did a little bit of study on this. Uh, it looks like the city of Sunnyvale is considered to be one of the best audit reports, uh, from recent years. And Sunnyvale uses the Tyler Technologies Moonie's ERP system. So does Livermore, so does San Mateo, so does, um, so does Vallejo, and so does Dublin, so does San Leandro. So I would encourage you to really spend more time on your IT department and understanding their needs. Because I understand in the recent budget cuts, we delayed and postponed the ERP decision. Um, and I even reached out to our, our CIO to see if residents could support their needs in any way. Uh, I believe the purpose of that, uh, was certainly well-understood because of, uh, the city's needs. However, the city can be left vulnerable if you do not pay attention and prioritize your IT investments, particularly in this current environment with cyber being a major risk. So I would encourage you to please ask for a study from the IT department to look at what ERP is used by the various cities. And based on what, what I've found independently, I think you really need to update your ERP system and really go with a ERP system that some of, or most of the other cities use that is really tailored to municipal systems, which is the, um, the Tyler Technologies Moonie's ERP. The other thing I want to point out from the audit report is seems like the decentralized practices around procurement and financial practices are, are an area of concern, particularly in the absence of strong, uh, oversight and controls. And that's something where Sunnyvale stands out pretty strong again. So I would also encourage you, if you have the chance, to ask for a follow-up, to ask for a compare and contrast competitive analysis of how we fare, uh, with, with respect to Sunnyvale. And look at what can we do in adopting best practices from Sunnyvale and Santa Clara. Both of them have unique best practices when it comes to, uh, governance from a centralized perspective. So hope you can look into the ERP as a first priority. And the second priority is either stronger controls on your decentralized processes or simplifying the processes. And finally, before I run out of time as a point of order, I hope city attorney Jensen will enforce strictly that other residents offering comment respectfully address council members and limit the comments to the topic and agenda. For the second time in a row, commissioner is making comments that are attacking residents as well as attacking council members. I ask city attorney Jensen to please enforce point of order with him. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And we do have one individual requesting to speak in community hall. That is Jennifer Griffin. Welcome, Jennifer.
Um, good evening, city council. I'm glad that you have a very, very professional audit, uh, committee here. I have a extremely strong background in statistics. I have a BA in biochemistry, but I did fulfill the BS requirements. I have had statistical training in biology, um, genetics and chemistry. My husband was in, uh, quality control for international purchasing and he has a master's degree with a 4.0 in, um, statistics. My stepfather was also in QA for tanks at FMC and he was, uh, hardware. Um, we, we don't want to have tanks that are defective, the Bradleys. Um, I just had, I am very, very frankly, as a member of the public, what has happened in the last day, two days, I'm very, very upset about the status of things in this city. Uh, Moss Adams has found that maybe statistically on paper, this city is healthy, but we're not. We, first of all, I will start out that I think the state picked a very, very bad time to come down hard on Cupertino with the Apple situation. We just can, sorry, okay, I don't know what I'm allowed to talk about. This, I'm making my comments.
I, I can, I can describe the agenda item you're talking about if you'd like me to. It's the, accept the enterprise risk assessment.
But the public can't say anything?
Please don't, please don't interrupt me. Could you accept the enterprise risk assessment and file a report for fiscal year 2024, 25, internal audit work plan?
All right, what can I comment on about?
Anything that's germane to that.
All right, I am not happy with, um, how the audit was completed. I, as a resident of the public, nobody interviewed us. And I am very, very upset with things that happened that brought this audit into... I, I don't know what I'm talking about anymore. I don't know what we are allowed to say, what we're not allowed to say. This is an audit of my city and I think it was incomplete. The public was left out. Um, we have some very serious problems in this city. I also worked in software on, at Tandem and at FM, at Laurel on a quality control for software release. Okay, I, I know statistics very well. I don't know what I'm allowed to talk about anymore. This is not the way it used to be 25 years ago. I'm not happy with this report. You guys can choose to accept it, but nobody asked the public. I, I suggest that people sit here and watch what happens tonight and you'll see what's sick in this city. And I, I don't like our, any of our city council members to be talked to like they were toddlers. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. Mayor, no further requests to speak on this item.
Okay, that concludes the, the public comments section of, uh, this agenda. Uh, let's bring Let's bring it back to council, and I hope we can entertain a motion to accept the staff report.
I'm happy to make the motion to accept the staff recommendation.
Okay, okay, thank you. We have a motion?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second.
I do have some additional questions if we.
Please go ahead and make your comments.
So, the report mentions demographic change and pointed out the aging population might be a risk due to a higher need for healthcare. But then I don't see much else mentioned. So, is that a risk area we should look into?
Demographic changes are part of the external environment, things the city has to think about how to respond to. So, similar to climate change, similar to public health.
So, that's not an area you assess. That's fine.
But, yeah, it's not necessarily an area that you would, that we would call out kind of separately.
Yeah. Then, is five-year CIP plan sufficient? Because a lot of this CIP, we have a really long list of not funded CIP. So, what other city, are other cities doing a longer period of CIP improvement plan?
What we typically see is a five-year funded or partially funded CIP. So, we know what we're going to do, and we know where the money is going to come from. And every single city I've ever worked with has a really long unfunded list. And that list can go out 20-plus years. If you have the money, you do it faster, and things change over time as well. So, you could do a 10-year CIP. Sometimes we see 10 to 15-year because things change, even simply just the cost of construction impacts how we can plan and pay for things. It's, you're not going to be able to stick to it as well as a five-year plan.
Okay, thank you. And I think it has been pointed about, did out by some member of the public, but never from our city manager or city staff about the risk of staff turnover. But that has never been mentioned as one of the risk area in any prior assessment. So, is that, have you looked into that? Is that an area of concern? Or our number is normal among cities?
Yeah, it's in the report. It's on page 21. It's part of the reason why human resources was a moderate to high risk level.
So, but compared with the previous two Enterprise Risk Assessment, have the, it gone up or down?
I don't know if that I would be able to tell you that off the top of my head. We looked at the last two years of turnover data. The, what we have noticed and called out here is that it's at the manager level where turnover has been particularly high in the city. And that was also true in the 2020s.
Manager level, but the, the other levels are not as.
It's not as high. The manager level is much higher than we would expect it to be, yeah.
And another area that I think member, many member of the public who have attended the meeting have pointed out is the decreasing transparency from the city and the lack of access to a lot of public information. If you have watched City Council meeting, you would see that this is a point that many members of, of the public has raised. So, is that an area you looked into?
So, it's certainly an area that was brought up during council discussions and something that we have noticed, participating in and, and watching your meetings. What I will say, as a person who has spent more than 20 years in government, you've got basically everything on your website that any other government would have. You've got an open checkbook system, right? We've got, all the documentation is out there. I think that the public always wants more information, and that's also no different than any other city. And that, that's a constant challenge for folks in your seat to identify what information is important, what's valid, what's appropriate to share, and what is also internal operations, what might be confidential for a reason.
I think at one point, many members of public have complained about the instability that we are putting a lot of items on consent and then restricting the options for the public, and even remove the option for the public to pull consent item. And that's likely a risk area many members of the public would consider a decrease in public access to the public meeting. Thank you.
I'm not an attorney, so I don't know if I can answer that question adequately. I would say every local government relies on a consent agenda to focus the time of elected officials on the most important things. And that setting the agenda and making sure that it's how you all want to spend your time is a really important job and a key part of your relationship with the city manager.
Thank you. Councilmember Moore, you had a comment?
Yes, it, it does seem that there's been a, after the previous reports, there was a, a real focus on the metric of the length of time of the meetings. And I think the pendulum has swung to the point where we're not really getting adequate time to deliberate. As you would have seen, going through the data, we've decreased the number of meetings significantly and the amount of time. So, if you were to take the number of meetings times the, the amount of time and compare the total over the past few years, you're going to see it, it's, you know, kind of falling off the cliff there. And, and I did describe the, the time limits that were given to some other council members. And their response was, you're not deliberating at that point. And, and it's true. It's gotten a bit like what used to be called Twitter, where you're just, you make a statement, there's no time for discussion. There is no discussion, and then a vote will be called. So, the rules have changed around that. They, they also changed around the ability for two council members to put something on the agenda. And when you have a minority of council members trying to get something on the agenda, the new system is set up such that the majority can go to the mayor and have that item put on the agenda through the mayor, through their prerogative, but the minority council members can have it completely removed. And in fact, in the last meeting, there was an effort to take the items that we had suggested and just put them on consent with the manager's recommendation, which for a number of the items would have just completely obliterated them. So, there wouldn't even, even have been some discussion on it at all, which is unfortunate. I do have a question, because I have seen a lot of really great improvement through this process over the past four years. There was a comment about procurement, and I know that we've, we've seen changes. And I'd rather that you described it or someone from staff described it rather than myself. But I, I'm really happy with the changes that have happened around that.
Do you want me to comment on procurement? Okay. Well, procurement was a high-risk area when we did our last risk assessment, a highly decentralized process, and an area where there was a great opportunity to improve policies and procedures. So, while what I would say, everything flowed the way it needed to, people didn't necessarily know that. So, it was a really hands-on process. It was a lot of work on the part of finance to make sure things went through the process. There was a lot of confusion. And so, since that time, so we conducted a procurement operational assessment that looked cradle-to-grave at the procurement process. The city also invested in your first procurement manager, so someone to really oversee the policies and procedures, make sure that folks have what they need. You put a lot of money out there on the street to purchase things, and there are a lot of things to consider, like insurance, like your policies and values as a city. And so, having all that in one place is great. And there's been a tremendous effort across the city to update those policies and procedures and adhere to them and learn lessons as we iterate in that process as well.
I have a little bit of time left. I just want to say that I'm, I've been really happy with the progress that this program has made within the city. I think it's, I think it's been really effective. And when we're talking about employee retention, this is something I mentioned in the, in the prep session about this, is that I think that this, this process makes the city much more attractive for employees that are looking for a great, great city to be trained in and for them to be more valuable employees as their career advances. So, I think this is a super smart thing for the city to be doing and keep, keep at it. Thank you.
Councilmember Wei?
Thank you, Mayor Mohan. Just a very brief question. I want to go back to when you hear whether council members, staff, talk about certain things. You back your investigation with data.
That's correct.
So, if there are things that we said you, to you, and you back with data, you don't think that is a true statement? You would have data to prove.
It is required by government auditing standards to have sufficient and adequate evidence for any statement that we make. So, that is what we do.
Thank you, because I think we heard a few complaints from a couple of council members. And I do believe for one thing says transparency, you probably, you know, if I tell you, the lot of residents always say we don't have transparency. How do you back it with data?
I go to your website. I look around. Like, we spend time digging in to see what information is available. We also want to hear what folks talk about when they talk about transparency. So, is it that the information is not available, or is it not available in the way that it used to be, for example? Or has the city changed systems, and folks don't know how to use the system? A great complaint that, a great, not a great complaint, but a complaint that we get across many of our clients is folks don't know when to put out their trash bins for, say, special item pickup. And we get lots of complaints to, you know, the app or to directly to council members for things like that. And if that information is provided in a mailer, if it's on the website, is that information clear? Is it easily accessible? Is it translated into major languages? You know, stuff like that. So, we'll ask for specific information, and then we'll look around to see if that can be verified or not. And we also talk to city staff. Is this stuff that you also hear? Are there steps that you've taken, things like that?
You say you do watch council meetings. So, if you see residents say, this, I don't have transparency, this is not transparency. You do see who says those and how often, and that's part of your data?
Yeah, yeah. I mean, that's not data. Again, that's a, that's anecdotal, or that's just sort of one data point. What we know also in government is of folks who have the interest, the education, the time and energy to attend a public meeting, whether virtually or in person, that's not your whole community. And so, that's why it's also really important to do a statistically significant community survey, when and if you can afford it. We see that, I mean, some of our clients do that every year, even every five years it's good because you try to get better representation across the board. Because people will have shift work, or they have childcare reasons, or they might not be able to attend for lots of reasons. And so, making sure that you hear across the board is, is a much better way for you to understand what does a community really care about and how can we meet their needs.
Okay, thank you. And one other question is sometimes we believe this is a risk area, but as a professional, you, you, you believe this is a procedures manual that's, you know, instilled by the city? Or, you know, so you are not in a position to judge which system is better, how do we procure it, how do we move from that? Is, is that a part of your risk assessment?
So, I, is your question maybe that you, does council have a different perception of risk than we? Yeah, so you're in a different position than we are, right? You're in a policy position, you're in a strategy position, so you're at a higher level. Staff are really in the operations, and we kind of straddle both of those. And you also are in kind of that interesting position of needing to set policy and kind of look long-term while people call you about dogs barking. And so, how do you balance those things? And so, we ask you what you hear about because that's important to us, but we also ask everybody what's important to them because we want to get all levels of the organization.
Okay, another question I want to follow up. Something like, like Councilmember Moore said, they don't have, we're not given a time to deliberate. Do you consider that a risk factor?
Well, your governance environment was a higher risk area last time, and that has decreased. And there's been a lot of attention given to governance. And what I would say is that in every public entity, any, any organization with a board, any organization with a leadership team, it is a pendulum that swings back and forth, right? There's hardly any organization that I work with that's kind of right in the middle. Everybody's really happy with how governance is and how our long-term policy and strategy looks. And that's part of the nature of government, is folks are elected. You're elected with a specific policy agenda, and you want to achieve that. And so, it's a back and forth. And so, you may have been in one place, you may be in a different place now, in three years, you might be in a different place. I mean, I can almost guarantee you'll be in a different place on that continuum.
Okay, thank you. So, the last thing I really want to emphasize, you do back all your research with data.
Yes.
Okay, thank you.
Councilmember Chow, is your lights still on? Can I go first and then you go?
Sure. I, I was really heartened to read this report, not just because there were many categories where we did significantly better relative to last year. And I also appreciated the comment that some of the things where we were high-risk was really a sort of factor of global environment, the finance, for example, that, that is not something that we control as much as, we just have to sort of, just sort of watch how the market reacts and for how the economic environment is. So, I was glad to read that. And I was also happy that you pointed out that the procurement area is where we need improvement. And that's exactly how it should be because our city has not spent too much time on procurement, and we got a procurement manager only about a year ago or so. And so, I can only see that improving from year to year. So, I mean, that tells me that we made, the staff made the right decision to get the procurement manager. And I know it's, the procurement department is a staff of one. Okay, so hopefully, as the, as we go on, we can beef up that department. I was also, I was somewhat concerned that the, the staff felt that the, the city hall and the seismic issue relating to city hall was something that they were concerned about. So, you know, again, it gives us pointers as to which way we should go in the future, looking at what the staff's concerns are, looking at what your, your concerns are in terms of where we can improve and where we have slipped and where we have not slipped. So, I, I think this is a very valuable exercise, and I am happy that you went into so much detail and gave us a fair and accurate assessment of where our city is. So, thank you for that.
We did have a motion. Councilmember Chow, did you, is your light on by mistake? Do you want to say something?
I do have one more question if we have time.
I think we should probably wrap it up because we do have a regular meeting coming up.
I'll ask later.
Okay, thank you. So, we have a motion, we have a second, and if we can all vote by lights, please.
Motion carries unanimously.
Great. Thank you very much, and thank you, Colleen, for a great presentation. Okay, so we will adjourn the special meeting. And we will start at 6:45. Thank you. Welcome to the regular meeting of the Cupertino City Council. It's Tuesday, July 2nd, and it is a little after 6:45. Let's stand up for the pleasure of allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The roll call, Madam City Clerk?
Councilmember Chow?
Here.
Councilmember Moore?
Here.
Councilmember Wei?
Yes.
Vice Mayor Frue?
Here.
Mayor Mohan?
Here.
Okay, Mr. City Attorney, is there a closed session report?
There's nothing to report, Mayor.
There is not, okay. Let me get my. So, there is a ceremonial item?
Yeah, thank you. Thank you. And it is to recognize July as Parks and Recreation Month. And I see Director Sanders here, but, and I will address it to you, and you can address it to your staff. So today we come together to recognize and celebrate the importance of our parks and recreational facilities in our city and proclaim July as Parks and Recreation Month in Cupertino. With more than a dozen beautiful parks in Cupertino, there are, there is an abundance of green space for residents to enjoy. Our parks are where our families gather for picnics, where children laugh and play, where festivals are celebrated, and where memories are made. Our beautiful parks and recreation spaces are a testament to the dedication and hard work of our Parks and Recreation staff, who tirelessly maintain them, ensuring that they remain safe and clean and accessible to all. I encourage all residents to explore our parks and trails, participate in our recreation programs for youth, teens, and seniors, and discover the vitality and community these spaces and programs bring to our lives. So thank you. Thank you to our staff, and thank you, Director Sanders. There is a proclamation which we will give you separately outside of this. Thank you. Madam City Manager, are there any postponements, orders of the day?
No, Mayor.
Okay. Okay, so let's go straight to oral communications. How many cards do we have, Madam City Clerk, so we can?
Yes, Mayor, I have three requests to speak from in Community Hall, and I see two hands raised requesting to speak virtually.
Okay, so each one gets three minutes to speak, and this portion of the meeting is reserved for those wishing to address the council on any matter within the jurisdiction of the council that is not on the agenda for discussion. The total time for oral communications will ordinarily be limited to one hour, and individual speakers are limited to three minutes.
Thank you very much, Mayor.
Actually, I have another person that's requesting to speak before you, but if she would like to allow you to go first.
Okay.
Jennifer Griffin? Would you like? Then we have Jerry Lammy, and then we have Lisa Warren.
I'm sorry, he's such a wonderful man. I'm going to just start out. My name's Jennifer Griffin. I live in Cupertino. Tonight I'm going to read a letter that I sent in, and it is nothing about anything else that's on here. Zelda Bronstein, writing in a June 25, 2024 article in Forty Eight Hills Magazine, is very concerned about a housing bill by Assemblywoman Buffy Wicks and State Attorney General Rob Bonta called AB 1893. This bill would alter the way builder's remedy is used in the state. This bill has angered many YIMBY groups. California YIMBY and the Housing Action Coalition actually supported the bill, while other YIMBY groups like YIMBY Action and YIMBY Law don't like the bill because it seriously affects builder's remedy, which these two groups have promoted. Ms. Bronstein says that AB 1893 goes even further than builder's remedy to be a threat to future construction in the state. AB 1893 eliminates the ability of local planning departments to make rational decisions about the actual buildability of a project and whether it is not buildable because of sequoia concerns, and allows a, quote, "reasonable person" to make judgments about whether the project is suitable to build or not. Under AB 1893, a reasonable person can determine that a planning department in a city has inappropriately delayed a building's construction and can sue the city under the Housing Accountability Act to force the building to be built. Developers would be making fundamental land use decisions in building construction rather than trained planners in city planning departments. Not only do planners have to be concerned about this proposed housing bill, AB 1893 by Wicks and Bonta passing, the general public needs to be aware that this bill is expecting the general public to be the best judge of what should be built or shouldn't. The ramifications of the allowed passage of this bill on the projects built in California in the future is truly terrifying. Thank you.
Thank you, Jennifer. And now we have Jerry Lammy, followed by Lisa Warren.
Thank you very much, Madam Mayor and City Council. I'm Jerry Lammy. I am the Executive Vice President, here I go again, Executive Director of West Coast Farmers Markets. We were founded in 2011 here in Cupertino. We've lost our contract at DeAnza. I've got till the end of the month at DeAnza in order to continue serving the community that I love, and this is where we began. I currently have 4,000 signatures of city residents that are crying out for us to find a home. I've reached out to Apple, I've reached out to Valco. I'm trying to work with the local high school right now, Montavista. We've approached city staff, we've asked about Memorial Park. We've been told that there are picnics that are set up there, but we've, in the past, we've been able to coexist with the picnics. We've been able to coexist with the Cherry Blossom Festival. I've asked city, I've asked the city if we could bring the market here to Torre Avenue. They've said that it's an expense of the city of $4,288. If that, if that happens, we can't afford to pay that, but I can work with city staff. I could bring a phenomenal, phenomenal market right here to this block. I'm just begging the city to find a way, to work with the residents. I'm sure you're going to start getting a lot of emails. I've got four weeks left. We've started Instagram and Facebook. One of the things that city staff pointed out, it's never been a problem in the 15 years that I've been in business, that I am a for-profit. And that's only because I was denied one time because the wind came up of a nonprofit status. It's something that if the, if a city really wants me to have that, I can do that. I work with West Coast Food Bank and with Second Harvest. We've, we've given, we've donated 1.5 million pounds of produce in the existence that we've been here for the 13 years we've been here. That equates to over $3 million in food back to the community. The community is going to be without that. The other, the other Creekside, Pacific Coast, they've had an opportunity to do that, they've never done that in the past. I have molded my farmers. I've got Indian farmers, I've got Asian farmers. They, they bring the produce that this community wants. That's the reason, if you've come to the market, please come out on Sunday. Please come out and see what we're going to lose. We need to find a home somewhere in Cupertino. Help me get to Montavista, that's, that's one of my last hopes. I'm doing everything I can. I've looked, I'm looking everywhere. I want to work with you, and, you know, I will, I will pay a reasonable price that, you know, in order to make this happen. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Jerry. Next we have Lisa Warren, and then we will move to those requesting to speak virtually.
Are you interested in looking at any of the signatures?
Excuse me, Jerry, your time has elapsed. You had three minutes allotted. Thank you. I will collect that for me, though.
Hello. I'm here to talk briefly, hopefully, about an item that was on consent at your last meeting, and that is the item that requested that you give negotiating privileges to City Manager to purchase 19400 Stevens Creek Boulevard office building. I have a lot of concerns about that. I know you had a meeting the following day, two weeks ago tomorrow, and I have no idea what became of discussions in that meeting. There's, but I just want to bring it kind of to anybody's attention that may not know that might be watching this. And I also want to share again my frustration with the, seems like rushed slide deck presentation that was put together and added as supplemental reports, once members of the community and city council had chosen to pull the consent item that had no information with it. So then came along supplemental report, and I brought it up at the time, but on this slide that contained this information... Thank you, Kirsten. Consider acquisition. That's, that's one thing. And there was a discussion between one of the city council members, well, a question to answer on the dais, about whether that was the goal, to purchase this property. And the answer from City Manager was yes. However, later in the same meeting, that got a little watered down, so still people don't know what to think, what's going on. I did learn and have, well, let me go on with this. First of all, this slide deck, this word turnkey means that the property, whether it's a residential or commercial building or home, turnkey means it is ready to roll. You open those doors, you move in, you're ready to roll. You don't have to do any tenant improvements, any of your own improvements, nothing. That is what turnkey means. So this is very deceiving to be presenting this building as a turnkey property. It is not. You can know that by driving by or looking in the windows. There were questions about whether reports, and there were no answers really that told us anything, that the city knew anything. Could serve while potentially ideas are explored. This is questionable how this is, and I'm just going to hurry to this, because this is an email that City Manager sent to all employees, according to the two thing, talking about it.
Thank you, Lisa, that is your time.
Thank you.
And we have one additional request to speak from Community Hall, that's from Yvonne Thorstensen. Yvonne? Oh, okay, my mistake. Okay, so we have, we will move to those requesting to speak virtually then. We have Sanar, followed by Danessa Tchamansky. Welcome, San.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan and councilmembers. I want to express my support for the farmers market that used to be at DeAnza College. However, I would request that it not be moved to Montavista High. The area around Montavista High is crowded enough on weekdays, and we'd like to enjoy our peace and quiet on weekends, especially early morning. I do hope we can look at other locations, however, such as perhaps Garden Gate Elementary or Miller Middle. I think it would also be nice to have a quiet cul-de-sac theater, some part of the city that can be served as a farmers market for that period of time. I do hope you can also try and keep it in the areas that are west of DeAnza, if possible. There is an existing farmers market on Creekside Park, so it would be a travesty if a second market had to move to the, to the areas of the city east of DeAnza Boulevard. Once again, the residents on the west side of Cupertino will be getting no service at local proximity. So anything that you can do that's close to telling would be nice. Perhaps we could use the foyer ground and the parking lot, I'll let you guys decide, but please don't use the Montavista High School, because that area is crowded enough as it is on weekdays, and we don't want to have another crowd going through McLellan and Fort Hill and, and that whole area. So thank you for that. I also want to comment on the item from last council meeting, on the consent calendar item around office space. The office vacancy rate in the south area is about 23% right now. The vacancy in Cupertino is a little lower at 14%. However, you can get Class B office lease space at lease rates that are as low as $54, $65 a square foot. If the purpose of this is an interim City Hall, when you have to either remodel or look at other options to make the existing City Hall seismically safe, please lease for the period you need. Please do not purchase an office property at this time. Maintaining an office property is going to be a lingering cost that we cannot afford, and this is not where we expect our elected officials to be spending your time and resources and priorities. We are not in the business of owning offices at a time when nobody's purchasing office properties. Please lease, you will get excellent lease rates in a market that is at all-time high vacancies. And finally, I would like to also add that as we look at the, at the ongoing trend of putting items on consent calendar, I would hope that as we saw with the, with the audit report, we will need to look at how we get these items on more public discussion. I don't believe we get enough time for public discussion, so I hope we explore ways that items are not added to consent and reducing and eliminating public discussion. Thank you.
Thank you, San. And next we have Danessa Tchamansky. Welcome, Danessa.
Hello?
Yes, we can hear you, but you're quite low, Danessa.
Oh, okay. I'll speak up a little louder.
Much better.
Okay, so, good evening. My name is Danessa Tchamansky, and I'm a 32-year Cupertino resident. I also would like to express my concern about the potential purchase of the 19400 office building on Stevens Creek. My understanding is that the city wants to purchase the building and use it for two years. So that building is about 45 years old, and it's been sitting empty for at least four years, and no one seems to be interested in leasing or buying it, except for us. It's likely outdated, and I think it's, isn't it about 4,000 square feet smaller than our current City Hall, which is supposedly too small? So I don't quite understand the point. We're also going to be getting 2 million square, almost 2 million square feet of new office at the rise. So who would buy that older building when we're done with it? This is looking more to be like a real estate investment at a time when our city's been struggling just to balance the budget. I also wasn't aware that it was legal for our city to speculate in real estate, and since more and more of even the more desirable office buildings in the area are continuing to sit empty, it just seems like a really risky decision. We also need to consider that we'll be needing money for new sheriff substation soon. Thank you.
Thank you, Danessa. Mayor, no additional requests to speak for this item?
Okay. So that ends the oral communications section of the agenda. Thank you for all those who participated in person as well as on Zoom. And your comments are heard, and if necessary, staff will follow up. Moving on to the consent calendar, Madam City Manager, have any items been pulled off consent?
Yes, Mayor. Item five was pulled by Councilmember Chow.
Okay. Councilmember Chow, did you have a reason for pulling this?
Members of the public made the request to pull. I also have questions about some recommendation by the consultant that the staff does not agree with.
Okay, so this item will be heard after the action calendar. Was that the only item, Madam City Manager?
Yes.
Okay. All right. Are there any public comments for items on the consent calendar?
Mayor, no. I currently do not see any requests to speak on any of the items on the consent, consent calendar.
Okay. So do we have a motion to adopt the consent calendar, other than item number five? Councilmember Wei, you have your light on?
Yes, I move we adopt consent, approve consent calendar two, three, four, and six.
Okay. Is there a second?
Second.
Okay, we have a motion and a second. Please vote by lights.
The motion carries unanimously.
Great. Okay, so now we move on to public hearings. And this is, the subject is municipal code text, specific plan, below-market rate mitigation manual and zoning map amendments relating to implementing the sixth cycle housing element application number MCA-2023-001. application number MCA-2023-001, SPA-2023-001, CP-2024-002, Z-2024-001, and EA-2024-001. The applicant is the city of Cupertino, location citywide. Madam City Manager, would you like to proceed with the staff report?
Thank you, Mayor, for the introduction. I'm glad to announce that this is the long awaited housing element step two, the rezoning effort that is before council for consideration tonight, before the CDD team launches into presentation. I just want to give a shout out to Lou Connolly, Pugos Benfu, and also our consultant from Placework for bringing the city to today. We're about half an inch close to the finish line. I am really ready to celebrate that victory tonight. And just, and so in, in anticipating the presentation, just wanted to mention that in order to best use everyone's time, we've decided to shorten the background section on the housing element and really trying to focus the energy and a discussion tonight for the rezoning effort. So that said, I know that I apologize for the presentation going out to council just a few hours today as the team is heavily working on a fine presentation that I'm sure they'll while you in a few minutes. Take it away.
Okay. Thank you very much. Thank you, City Manager Wu. Good, nice to be here again, council members, Mayor Mohan. I think as Pamela just alluded to, we're going to try to keep this a little more condensed because we've had a lot of overviews and presentations on this item. But I think the important thing to say at the outset, and I'll probably touch on it a few times, is that tonight we're really focused on the rezoning. We've talked about the housing element now for two and a half years and the housing element itself was adopted on May 14th. So this is really that final step in making HCD's April letter, April letter final where we're trying to comply with the condition that is put upon us to get our rezoning of our priority housing sites in place. So the agenda for tonight, we're going to have a brief overview of the process and what a housing element is, then get into the rezoning and its scope, that it's focusing on two new zoning districts and some of the text changes. There are related amendments related to heart of the city and the city's BMR manual, really just one related to the BMR manual. We'll touch on the staff recommendation, which is essentially unchanged from what went to the planning commission three weeks ago. We'll review the planning commission discussion and their recommendations, public comments that have been received since that, which are quite a few, but are kind of easily broken down into two, two categories. And then we'll look at the next steps. And again, I just want to remind that anyone tonight coming here, our housing element is already adopted. So what we're talking about tonight is rezoning to implement it. Nothing tonight is changing what was done on May 14th. Okay. Very brief overview is housing element, in case anyone is not aware, is a state mandated general plan element that's required to be updated every eight years. We are in the cycle from 2023 to 2031s. We're about a year and a half into that cycle at this point in time. It consists of a needs assessment, a fair housing assessment, a constraints analysis, sites inventory, and policies and programs. The oversight agency, as we already mentioned, is California Department of Housing and Community Development, who on April 10th sent us a letter saying that our housing element substantially complies with state housing law contingent on getting the rezoning of the priority housing sites in place, which is why we're here tonight. I won't say in the last bullet again because I've already said it twice, but we have already adopted the housing element on May 14th. It did go, the rezoning that is, to the planning commission three weeks ago on June 11th and will be presenting on what happened at that meeting towards the end of this presentation. These are our priority housing sites. There's 58 individual parcels spread around the city. I think as this shows, if you look at the major corridors, Deanser, Stevens Creek, Homestead, Wolf, you can see most of these sites are located along those corridors. We're going to have a slide a few, a few minutes on that will show that most of these sites to about 70% of them are going to be zoned what is called R4, which is a new zoning district that is essentially accommodating our higher density zoning that's necessary to meet arena. So those sites we'll be showing in more detail in a second. So now we'll launch into the rezoning, which is the focus of tonight's meeting. The scope of the rezoning as staff has put forward is we're trying to stay focused on what is necessary to implement the housing element. So this is really to get the housing element finalized. Probably the main piece is that we're having two new zoning districts, the R4, which is our higher, higher density district, and a TH combining district. This essentially acts as an overlay to work with the R3 zone or the R4. And it would be really designed to get townhome development in conjunction with higher density development or in proximity to lower density, single family neighborhoods. We are modifying some existing regulations, which we'll talk about in districts such as the R3. There are also text changes that are proposed and really all of these are designed to be consistent with current state law or to make sure there's internal consistency between the city's documents, such as the general plan and the zoning ordinance. We have map amendments that are solely focused on the priority housing sites, which is the slide we already showed. There are no other properties being rezoned or proposed for being rezoned through this action tonight. So I know we've talked a lot and will be talking about the city's missing middle housing strategy, which is strategy HE136. This is the strategy that would essentially allow R2 standards to be used on R1 primarily corner lots, but also R1 zoned lots that are adjacent to major corridors with commercial use. None of those properties are being proposed for rezoning. Okay. So here's a slightly modified slide of the map we had showed before. The green hatched pattern shows those sites that would be the R4 zoning district sites. At present, there is no R4 zone. This, this zoning district was set up to, to enable the city to really meet its arena on the higher density sites that are between 50 and 80 units per acre. So it aligns with two new general plan designations that were adopted by the council in May, the high very high and the very high, again, which gets you in a range of 50 to 80 housing units per acre. So you can see 40 of these sites, 40 of the 58 total sites are in the zoning. All of them are along the city's major corridors where you'd expect them to be for this type of density of housing that's being proposed. So we can go to the next slide. Now, this is not an actual project. It's just to try to avoid showing a lot of text and to try to get the concept of what the R4 zone is really about. We'll be talking about the proposed building height in a lot more detail later, but this is trying to show how the R4 zone would actually work, say, if you had a five-story building proposed, which would be typical of that zoning district. So you could assume, say, this is Stevens Creek Boulevard and where it says arterial at the extreme right of the slide, that would be the Stevens Creek corridor. So what we're looking at through this would be essentially what you have with the heart of the city standard, a building that would be set back 35 feet from the face of the curb, but eight, nine feet from the property line. This is an existing heart of the city standard, so we're not modifying that right now. As the building got above level three, you would have an additional nine-foot step back. At the rear of the property, which is to the left of the slide, we're seeing what's presumably, say, a two-story home, a lot of Cupertino's lots back up to single family neighborhoods. So the intent would be to have this much larger scale building go in, you would have a 30-foot rear yard setback from the property line. And then again, above three stories, you would have an additional 15-foot step back or a separation of 45 feet from the wall of the building from that rear property line. So the intent is really to try to keep, you know, to get the higher density buildings in, in a way where they're not overwhelming the existing neighborhoods. And I think this concept's been talked about for at least two years as we've had meetings on this. So this is really what we're getting at and I'm just trying to keep this at a high level discussion. Again, this is the R4 looking dead at the building, so you're now looking at the side setbacks. To the left, we're showing a two-story building, to the right, a three-story building. And the idea is to show that the R4 zoning setbacks are essentially relational to what's around them. So with the two-story building on the left, you can have a 10-foot setback up to two stories. And then the remaining stories of the five-story building would be set back an additional 10 feet. Whereas on the right, you have an existing three-story building, you can have a three-story, three stories within 10 feet and only the top two stories would be stepped back. So again, this is, the zoning is trying to really keep in mind the existing character of the city and accommodate higher density development in the best way possible. The TH or townhome combining zone, one of the main reasons for this, as I think we all know, townhomes are probably, not probably, they're the most sought after residential project we have in the city right now. We focus more on R4 because we need the higher density, but we did want to have an option for developers that want to develop townhomes either solely or in conjunction with higher density development. So we've applied the townhome combining district to 16 R3 zone properties. So this is more mid zoning level than higher zoning like the R4. And the goal again is to get things to blend into neighborhoods. A lot of the R3 sites are in lower density neighborhoods, so we want to have buildings that are more compatible, something that we've seen through, say, like your 1655 Deanser project is a good example of this, where you had townhomes adjacent to single family and a larger building out towards the streetscape on Deanser. You would have a 30-foot maximum height, which is a general plan standard in this combining district. And the front setback would essentially be set up based on what the R3 zoning is. But again, this is really just an opportunity to try, to try to provide townhome options in conjunction with higher density. There are plenty of other non-priority housing sites in the city also though that could accommodate townhome development. Other new standards that would be, that are in the rezoning that's before you, emergency shelters and other similar types of housing where state law is essentially requiring that these be allowed. We've made changes that are consistent with state law. They're not going any further, but these are things that we need to have in the zoning ordinance to be compliant. So for instance, with emergency shelters, they need to be allowed in at least one zoning district. We are proposing them in the BQ, which is the quasi-public zoning district and the new R4 zoning district for higher density housing. The, the second bullet about by right approval is probably of the greatest concern to HCD in terms of compliance. This is something that is required for priority housing sites and we have already run this by HCD staff to make sure that the language is acceptable. You essentially have the requirement that any of the priority housing sites that are going to be 20, 20 units per acre or more, which is nearly all of our sites, and have 20% of its units available to low or very low income households, you need to have a ministerial approval process. That means you'd be exempt from CEQA and you would really only have to comply with objective design review standards. The process we're envisioning through the rezoning for this would be for larger projects, 50 units or more, excuse me, smaller projects of 50 units or more, would go through an administrative hearing. Larger projects greater than 50 units would go to planning commission. But since this is a ministerial review, in many ways, these hearings would almost be acting like public notice. So the community is aware of the project. It would be very different from the discretionary process that people are used to years ago. So this is really acting as a way to inform the community about these projects, but not necessarily alter or restrict their development. And as I said earlier, there are modification to existing zoning districts and standards. So in the R3 zoning district, which is essentially a multifamily, mid-scale district, we've structured the ordinance now to try to make a difference between, say, projects that have four units and those that are five units or more. For instance, allowing greater coverage with a five unit or more project. Right now, there's one coverage standard, so that would be a difference proposed tonight. And we also have put in language to ensure that there's maintenance of common areas that is typical and used in other districts in the city's code. We also have different chapters in Title 19, again, with the conformance of state law regarding housing types that must be allowed by right, which we've talked about, say, with emergency shelters and definitions that are being updated to also be consistent with state law. In terms of the zoning map and BMR manual, there are changes related to those. They're relatively minor. The map itself is being updated, so you have the new zoning districts reflected and the priority housing sites will be clearly called out so anybody can locate those and see what they are. They will be shown by new colors and labels on the map. The TH overlay district will also be indicated for the 16 sites that that applies to. The BMR manual, essentially the one change to that is that we would be lowering the requirement to provide an affordable unit from a seven-unit project to a five-unit project. That's the sole change that's proposed that is already in the adopted housing element. I believe it's policy HE233. And now we can move to the planning commission meeting from three weeks ago on June 11th and get into what was discussed there. The planning commission, we had one absent member, so on the code changes that were proposed, which is the second bullet, we had a lot of 2-2 votes. So staff's recommendation is essentially unchanged from there. We did get unanimous approval for O on changes to the heart of the city specific plan text, the BMR mitigation manual change, and the adoption of the zoning map. So I think now we can get into the specific sort of issue by issue. Many of these were topics discussed where there was not a motion made, but I think it's important because we've also received a lot of public comments on these same issues and I'm sure they'll be coming up tonight. Regarding the R4 zoning district, if you look at that right now, we have sort of a dual height standard, a 70-foot building height maximum and five stories. So you'd have to meet both of those. There was a lot of discussion and a lot of the comments we've received are saying, why not just go with the one standard and keep 70 feet, not specifying a number of stories? We've not received comments, nor was there any discussion at planning commission to go below 70 feet or above 70 feet. So on that standard, there was consensus, but again, whether we want to have the five stories maintained or just be silent on that where it would be feasible to say have a six-story building, that was an issue discussed, but there was no action taken by the planning commission. The second bullet, just to clarify, like, why we had this dual standard was we're really looking at construction typologies of what, what would most likely fit within a 70-foot height limit? So assuming you had a podium parking or a taller ground floor, say, for commercial, the idea was that you're more likely to get a five-story building, but it does not mean you could not have a six-story building. So I think on this discussion, the guiding principle was that the 70-foot maximum is what was recommended and it's what we've reached consensus on. So council could opt to do whatever they choose tonight on that height limitation. Other topics that were discussed at the planning commission, quite a few again relate to our missing middle strategy. This would be the single family properties, primarily corner lots and allowing the flexibility to use R2 standards or duplex development to develop those properties in the future. We did also have the first bullet, there was an issue raised about maintaining front setback consistency for single and family neighborhoods, particularly in the R1A, which has, I believe, a 30-foot front setback and a, and a larger 10,000 square foot lot requirement, was to try to maintain that as a uniform standard for the streetscape. Maintenance of the R1 standard was passed by the planning commission. There was consensus on agreeing to maintain the R1 setback for the, for the front yard. There was also discussion about parking standards, whether to have a duplex standard, which essentially requires six spaces per duplex, three covered, three uncovered, or to have two open and two enclosed, which is typical in the R1 zoning district for single family homes. Again, there was no consensus reached on that. That has been a topic we have received a lot of subsequent comments on as well, and I'm sure we'll be talking about that further and is something that council could decide whether to go with the duplex parking standard or the existing R1 standard of four per unit. Continuing again on the duplex, missing middle strategy, we currently have in the definition of duplex, a standard that would say the units would need to be within 200 square feet of each other for their floor area. The reason this was added is because the current standard says the units need to be comparable, which is hard to define under any, any circumstances, but now under state law, where things have moved to objective standards, comparable is really not something that's enforceable at all. So we can leave it in the code, it's currently there, but it's just something that really doesn't give us any kind of authority if there were to be a standard. 200 square feet was arrived at, assuming you wanted, you'd have a unit, say, that had one more bedroom or one more bathroom, that would be one more bedroom or one more bathroom, that would be about 200 square feet. So, you're trying to quantify what comparability would be. There's no requirement to have any objective standard. The goal was just what we have currently is unenforceable, so we come up with a standard. We have received comments, and there was discussion about not having the 200 square feet. That's something that would be acceptable. Again, objective standards are where things are moving in zoning, but it's not required to have them. So, again, this is an issue I think we'll be talking about further and probably get some speakers commenting on. Okay, we've got a lot more text on this slide, but essentially, the issue here is that for the missing middle strategy, we had proposed a floor area ratio of 55%. That standard does not exist in the R2 zoning district, there is no floor area ratio requirement, there is a coverage requirement of 40% in the R2. The reason we had proposed a 55% FAR, we have other communities like Mountain View and Sunnyvale have that applying to R2 zones, but it was mostly for compatibility because our R1 standard is 45%. So, again, we're looking at what would be most compatible if you had R1 lots developing using R2 standards. I think what down below where we issued, the issue primarily here is, we're trying to blend compatibility with existing single-family neighborhoods, but we also want to encourage use of the HE 136 missing middle strategy, which we have not used yet. So, I think there is some feeling that the more you don't have requirements, the more likely people are to use R2 standards. And again, duplexes are very often consistent with single-family homes, which is why they blend into single-family neighborhoods. So, the issue really comes down to, do we need the 55% FAR? Could there be a different standard? Or do we not want to have one at all, which is how the R2 zone is currently written today? Related to the Town Home Combining District, I believe the day of the Planning Commission meeting, we did receive a letter from a local developer, where we led us into the issue of height increases. I believe they had mentioned 37 feet. We had focused on maybe perhaps a 35-foot standard. The primary issue here is that the city-wide standard is 30 feet. So, at this time, we're not proposing a general plan amendment to change that. There would certainly be options for developers interested in doing townhomes, that they could do things like lower the floor plate, essentially have a lower ceiling height, the pitch of the roof could be modified too, or you can probably work within a 30-foot height limit. There was no consensus arrived at on the Planning Commission's vote, but again, this was an issue we did talk about, as well as lot coverage and floor area ratio for townhomes. There were issues like in terms of increasing the footprint through coverage and floor area ratio, how that might impact landscaping or the urban tree canopy. One change I could say we had was going into the Planning Commission, we had recommended a floor area ratio for townhomes of 70%. I believe the request we received from the developer was to raise that to 110 or more. We have subsequently said at 85% FAR would seem to be realistic, since we are allowing, would be allowing a 55% coverage. And anyways, this is kind of a happy medium where we think we could get townhomes that would be smaller than single-family homes, therefore more affordable than single-family homes, and sort of keep them in that size where they're providing more of a missing middle housing than getting to be comparable to a single-family detached house. Public comments, again, a lot of these are going to align with, you can dance, thank you. A lot of these I think were covered at the Planning Commission, but we've received, I want to say between emails that have gone to council, some that have gone to staff, probably a little over 50 comments in the last week. And most of these focused on these issues. I think they can essentially be broken down to, we've got about half the people, maybe slightly more, saying that you should just follow the recommendations staff had going into the Planning Commission, do what would get the housing element adopted, and essentially no more than that. And we also have these bullet point items that are enumerated up here of eliminating the story requirement, as we talked about in R4, and just going with the flat 70-foot height requirement, eliminating the 200-foot comparability standard in the definition of duplex, and just not having that, expanding or modifying lot coverage limits in the R3 zones, or even eliminating the minimum lot size in R3. And again, I think on the right side of the screen, again, this touches on our missing middle policy of the floor area ratio standard we've talked about, the 55% that would be required for R1s using the R2 standards, lowering the parking standards to what would be comparable for a single-family home, even though you'd be building a duplex, it would essentially be four spaces per duplex, and also looking at side yard setbacks that would be comparable with the R1. I think one of the issues with that is while R1 allows five-foot side yard setbacks, a lot of the lots that would be taking advantage, by far the majority of this missing middle strategy are on corner lots, where the corner side yard is typically 12 feet in the R1. So, again, I think that, well, I just wanted to say is I think while we received a lot of comments, most of them can go into these two categories of essentially sticking with what staff had recommended, or expanding it to try to further the intent to get more housing and freeing up standards to get more missing middle housing in particular in R1 neighborhoods. And we're getting near the very end here, so just want to go to the next slide. I don't know how useful it is to talk about this now, but it could be helpful as we get into questions. On the left column, we have put all of the city's existing residential zoning districts. The next column over is to say what would be the typical scale of a building that would be built in those zoning districts. Then, the middle two columns under lot coverage show what's existing for the zoning districts. The bottom two, they don't exist at all now, so there's no standards. And then what is proposed through the staff recommendation. And the final two columns to the right do a similar thing with the floor area ratio, with what's existing and what would be proposed. So, I think if there are questions as we go on, this could be helpful to sort of have a snapshot of what you have in the various residential districts throughout the city. You can also note that the R2 district, we are not proposing any changes to that zoning district, just that their standards could be used in R1. Similarly, for R3, for projects that would be four units or less, there are no changes proposed, and same in the R1 zoning district. Recommendation is actually fairly simple, would be that the city council adopt the resolutions for the municipal code amendments in Attachment A, the specific plan amendments and BMR mitigation manual updates in Attachment B, and the zoning amendments, zoning map amendments in Attachment C. Next steps are getting shorter. We're going to be kicking off our objective design standards, and we hope to have something fall or later this year to come before the city council. We had just had sort of our kickoff meeting with Placeworks last week on this, and we're going to try to move this along as quickly as we can. Again, try to get it completed by the end of this calendar year. And similarly with the health and safety element, which is required to be updated along with the housing element, that should be coming along kind of in conjunction with the objective design standards. And that's it. I don't know how long it was, but it was in 45 minutes. So, happy to answer any questions, which I'm sure there will be a few.
Thank you, Luke. Let's go to council, and if we have any technical questions for Luke and Pew, this would be the time to ask them. Five minutes per speaker, and we will start with, no one. Do we, do we not have any questions? We can always go back to public comments, and then we can come back to council. So, let's go to public comments, Madam City Clerk.
Yes, ma'am, I have five speaker cards requesting to speak in Community Hall, and I see about 10 hands raised requesting to speak virtually, so that's about 45 minutes.
So, how many, in?
Virtually.
Yeah, virtually 10 plus, you said?
Nine, so we have 14, so 42 minutes worth of speaking time.
And in person, we have about six, five? Okay. Just to move things along, let's have two minutes per member of the public to speak on this issue. Two minutes.
Two minutes, okay, great. We will start with Lisa Warren, followed by Jennifer Griffin, followed by Yvonne Thorstensen. So, please have your hand raised in the next nine minutes in order to speak on this item. Welcome, Lisa.
Thank you. Okay, here, I'm here tonight to request that you please not make any further changes to the staff's proposal to finalize this housing element. Support your staff, our neighborhoods, and a variety of residents by voting yes to pass the staff's proposal without changes. In their sixth cycle housing element, HCD has mandated a never-before-heard-of set of rules. Compliance is, as always, forced. It is safe to state that the very large percentage of cities and consultants were caught off guard and struggled with the lack of any clear direction from HCD, even after asking for clarifications. HCD is an interesting group to be given such power, and I might note that they are actually under audit currently. HCD is difficult to satisfy, yet they have proven that Cupertino's current housing element satisfies them. It is compliant in all ways. Luke Connolly, Pew Gosh, and the team of consultants at reputable and knowledgeable Placeworks led by Charlie Knox have worked hard and smart to get this job done, to meet and likely exceed HCD's guidelines. There is no logical or responsible reason to consider going beyond the proposals that have been presented by staff to Planning Commission and now to you tonight. For something this important to your fellow residents and the future of the city that you have been elected to represent, it would be foolhardy to go beyond a highly controversial housing element that is already poised to create a burden to residents of all kinds. I don't think that anyone would successfully argue that things as important as quality of life, environment, air quality, water, power, and infrastructures of multiple types are already at stake. Remember your campaign promises and move swiftly to a motion and a yes vote to fully accept our staff's recommendation for housing element.
Next, we have Jennifer Griffin, followed by Yvonne Thorstensen. Welcome, Jennifer.
Thank you, City Council. I'm a little bit upset about the three minutes, I think that's pretty cheap. Anyway, we'll do the best we can.
It's two minutes, Jennifer, sorry.
The comment, we did not have anyone address the mysterious Cupertino-for-all letter, which popped up on June 18th and was in the city council documents, but as I pointed out in the letter to you, the public didn't even know the agenda until the 26th of June. Could someone please say why Cupertino-for-all's letter wound up submitted by the 18th? That doesn't make any sense. You guys should not be, don't make any judgments on it, because that letter is the one that is dissenting from the current adopted housing element, and my kudos to our wonderful staff here. Please do not deviate from their recommendations. Cupertino-for-all is under suspect because they tried to game the system by submitting a letter that changed everything. I find it abhorrent, and I think we need to have a full investigation into who they are influencing. I'm also concerned about, as I said before, the Rena numbers are wrong, and this is where we fell. And why, no one has explained, except someone, I have been following the Los Altos housing element for personal reasons. You guys don't need to know why. I have not seen things like this happen in Los Altos. As you know, my church is in the housing element, the minister is not happy. But the insertion of missing middle is pure yimby. It has nothing to do with HCD, let's get rid of it. I don't want to have duplexes on the corners, and I couldn't follow what the PC was doing with duplexes on the corner, thank you.
Thank you. And next, we have Yvonne Thorstensen, followed by Connie Cunningham, followed by Jean Bedord. A reminder, the time has been adjusted to two minutes per speaker, thank you.
Okay, I'm a homeowner in Cupertino, and I'm really pleased to see the rezoning moving forward on the housing element. It's at, the comments I'm going to make now don't have anything to do with changing the housing element that was approved by HCD. It's only around the rezoning, which is required as part of that, in addition to that housing element. So, I hope that, I have sent a letter with some details about my ideas or concerns about the rezoning, and so I will just let you look at that. But in general, I would like to see the council air on the side of increased flexibility and architectural freedom in these zoning regulations, rather than creating new or unnecessary restrictions. This is important because we could benefit from having a kind of diversity in Cupertino that we don't often see, and that is economic diversity. This is also important for our community, for building our better school districts, and embracing all of the, all of our neighbors in adjacent cities and areas, and that are children who would eventually want to move back to Cupertino and would like to have different housing options than are currently available. Thank you so much for embracing the spirit of affirmatively furthering fair housing in our city.
Thank you, Yvonne. Next, we have Connie Cunningham, followed by Jean Bedord, followed by Louis Sadadi. Welcome, Connie.
Thank you. Good evening, Honorable Chair Mohan, Vice Chair Fruin, council members Wei, Chow, and more. I am Connie Cunningham, Housing Commission, speaking for myself only. Thank you, City Council, for adopting the housing element on May 14th. I fully support that extraordinary document. Tonight, I urge you to strengthen it with zoning to affirmatively further fair housing, a key goal of this sixth cycle. HCD must agree and approve this rezoning as well as the housing element. Thank you to staff for your very good work on the rezonings to date. It is critical to provide homes for all incomes and abilities, and also to provide climate protections for all residents. I had a question about the lot coverage, you may have covered it, I didn't, I mean, you did cover that, but I wasn't quite sure, so I'll just leave my question as it is. What is the standard? How can it be written to allow developments to occur with areas for landscaping? Many Cupertino policies are related to urban heat island effect, sustainability, and maintaining an urban tree canopy. This is more complex than it sounds because of the interplay with other building codes such as FAR and parking, which have been discussed. Cupertino-for-all did right, council, describing specific actionable changes that you as policymakers can enact to ensure that HCD will accept them. I fully support these recommendations and urge that you adopt them. These strengthen our housing element, fully answering the requirements of state law to affirmatively further fair housing. Remove the five-story limit, remove the change in the definition, request staff to partner with stakeholders for objective development standards. More flexibility to design houses of varying types and for varying incomes and abilities without having to rely on state law workarounds like the density bonus law.
Thank you, Connie, that is your time.
Thank you for your consideration.
Next, we have Jean Bedord, followed by Louis Sadadi. Welcome, Jean.
Good evening, council members and staff. My name is Jean Bedord, I am a longtime resident. The housing element has been a long process. I've attended most of the meetings, and it has been long. I want to commend our staff for their excellent job in pulling all of this together and providing great, a great, a great proposal. I urge you, I've sent a letter previously with some of the modifications that I think are best introduced in this proposal, to increase flexibility in the standards. It's not to our advantage to be so prescriptive that it discourages developers to build in Cupertino. We've had too much We've had too much of that the past few years. And in particular, I urge you to come to a consensus tonight on this rezoning and unanimously approve this agenda item. In particular, I urge Councilmember Kitty Moore to approve it. She voted against the housing element on May 14th. And also, Councilmember Liang Chow, who abstained from approving the housing element. Fortunately, we had three strong council members who approved the housing element, and so we're reaching the end of the process. Please, please, it's time to finish this up so that we can move on and make Cupertino a better place to live. Thank you.
Thank you, Jean. Next, we have Louise Sedadi. Welcome, Louise.
Hello, I'm Louise Sedadi, resident of Cupertino and homeowner for 38 years. I wrote a letter in written communications about this and gave a very detailed outline. Jennifer Sharon also wrote a letter, and she was planning to speak tonight, but unfortunately, she's very ill. So she gave me permission to say that she supports what I'm saying. So though Cupertino has adopted a housing element, the city cannot be considered certified until it has conducted required rezonings. As such, Cupertino has no certified housing element until the city rezones. The HCD must still review our rezonings to see if they're acceptable. And so it's very interesting to me that the same, some of the previous speakers that have a long history of speaking out against any development tonight are saying that we should just adopt the first draft done by the city staff that is the most restrictive interpretation of the rezoning. And now, there are a lot of people who have sent their individual letters, not copy-pasted, like some of the supposedly half the letters that came in to keep the zoning the same. These are actually from real people that have sent letters saying that we should make the zoning less restrictive so developers can be creative to create housing from seniors that want level housing to young people who don't care and are happily willing to climb three stairs, three flights of stairs. So don't be restrictive. Please modify the staff recommendations to make them more flexible.
Thank you, Louise. And next, we will move to our virtual speakers. There are 12 hands raised. We will start with Sandana Seva, followed by Donna Austin, followed by Philip Nguyen. Welcome, Sandana.
Hi, City Council members. I'm Sandana Seva. I'll be attending San Jose State this fall. And I'm really glad about the housing element that the staff has proposed. And I have some recommendations for the rezonings. I think we should change, like, the five-story height limit for the R4 district to just like having 70 feet and giving the developers and architects more freedom to design however many stories they want. And I additionally think that for the R1 district, we should get rid of the 55-floor area ratio requirement and the 40% lock coverage requirement. And I think we should reserve more space for the living space rather than the parking requirements, which is like very environmentally unfriendly because it reserves more space for cars rather than people. And I also think the definition of the duplex put forth by the code can be a little too restrictive. So maybe like changing that as well. And in addition, allowing the R2 district to have like four units would be very nice as well. And I think this would be really good because we're not allowing development in open space areas, which is very important for wildlife gene transfer and conservation. And this will allow our city and our communities to be more connected with each other through these new housing developments, and we'll invite more diversity into the Cupertino community instead of it being very exclusive to a certain group of people. Thank you.
Thank you, Sandana. Next, we have Donna Austin, followed by Philip Nguyen. Welcome, Donna.
Hello, City Council. This is Donna Austin, 47-year resident. And I urge the approval of this CFA report and their recommendations on the Cupertino zoning policies. I encourage the Council to act on the ability to bolster the rezoning and emphasize inclusion for the housing element. Let us bring our housing element into full compliance with state law. And I agree with the staff's recommendation for a vibrant, inclusive council and less restrictive. And I would say eliminate the five-story requirements and aside the parking. Or we want to avoid the builder's remedy if we don't get this approved. So let's keep going. I urge you to approve the CFA's report and to get on with bringing our housing elements into full compliance with the law and avoid the builder's remedy that some of the council members mentioned they were worried about. But that's what's going to happen if we don't get an approved agenda. So I thank you for, the staff's work was outstanding, and I agree with most of their recommendations. The FAR, I would agree, where they had said staff recommended 80 or 85 rather than 55. But maybe we just eliminate the requirement for that. Thank you, and that's it.
Thank you, Donna. Next, we have Philip Nguyen, followed by Dinesh Tekmansky, followed by Sashi Bagor. Welcome, Philip.
Hello, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers and staff. My name is Philip, and I am a longtime community member of Cupertino. First, I would like to express my gratitude to the Council for adopting the new housing element back in May. This is a huge, huge step for putting Cupertino on a path towards a more inclusive, resilient, and affordable city. I also want to thank staff for their proposed rezonings to achieve full compliance with state law. Otherwise, we're subject to the builder's remedy right. A few of the policy recommendations, such as removing the five-story limit in R4 zoning and decreasing, or maybe even wiping out parking minimums just to allow for more flexibility in development, will go a huge way as well. Staff and CFA's recommendations will also create a more vibrant and resilient community. Today, we're experiencing a heat wave, like this week, and these heat waves and droughts will only get worse and more frequent if we don't decrease single occupancy vehicle usage through commuting from long ways, far away due to Cupertino's unaffordability and lack of housing supply. So please, please, adopt the recommendations. Thank you so much.
Thank you, Philip. Next, we have Dinesh Tekmansky, followed by Sashi Bagor, followed by Claudio Bono. Welcome, Dinesh.
Hello, good evening. My name is Dinesh Tekmansky. I'm a 32-year Cupertino resident. Tonight, I'm asking that you please don't make any further changes to our zoning above and beyond what is practical compliance with our recently accepted housing element. I think that Pugh Gosh and Luke Connolly and staff have done a great job with our current housing element zoning, and that we need to heed to their expertise. I think it's premature to see depressures to rezone for reduced parking as well until we have viable transit alternatives that everyone can use. It's a bad idea all around. Just today, I don't know if people saw it, there was an article in the Mercury News that families are fleeing the Bay Area for less expensive housing, and that school enrollment than in third county has recently dropped by 15%, and is expected to drop by another 18% by 2033. Housing here is always going to be more expensive by the nature of where we live. It is. I wish I could say differently. But we need to keep in mind also that our currently assigned RENA numbers for this cycle are being called out for reevaluation. But I think it's a little premature to play guessing games with additional unrequired zoning changes until the dust settles a little bit and we have a better picture of our future need. I do understand that outside special interest groups are putting pressure on our city to make significant changes as far as our last City Council meeting. But I don't feel that they're grasping the need for, we really need a critical balance of carefully planned density and infrastructure. I think that adding density for density's sake is kind of a Winchester mystery house approach to planning. As I said, everything needs to be in balance. And while more housing is definitely a priority, there's a point of diminishing returns when too much density, insufficient parking, traffic, diminished fire safety, lack of green or open space, and overcrowded.
Thank you. That is your time. Next, we have Sashi Bagor, followed by Claudio Bono, followed by San Ar. Welcome, Sashi.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay. Good evening, City Council. My name is Sashi Bagor, a longtime resident of Cupertino. Thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I support the staff recommendation without any changes, and we need to heed to their expertise. Please remember your campaign, Vice Mayor Fruein, about the housing element. The HCD has approved the housing element, so please get this done. By the way, I am a real person who sent a letter to say please don't accept any changes. Don't waste any more time. The staff has worked very hard. Again, they are the experts, so please accept the staff recommendations. Do not increase the maximum floors. Do not reduce the parking. Do not increase the floor area without proper understanding of what we really need to get done. Just get the housing element done, and let's move on. Thank you.
Thank you, Sashi. Next, we have Claudio Bono, followed by San Ar, followed by Rod Sinks. Welcome, Claudio.
Good evening. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening, Mayor Mohan, Vice Mayor Fruein, Councilmember Moore, Chow, Lady Manager Wu, City Attorney Jensen, City Staffman and Clerk, and to all the residents. Good evening. Claudio Bono here, Cupertino resident for over 10 years, and I'm speaking on my behalf as a resident. It's called freedom of speech. Some should look at it. This has been a long time coming, indeed. I recommend City Council to bring the housing element in full compliance, asking City Council to approve the recommendation for Cupertino zoning policies to bolster rezoning that emphasize inclusion, like everybody knows we need and want a vibrant and inclusive Cupertino. Nothing new here. And as far as front and rear setback standards, I know we'll have time to share our comments later on. Same for the townhome development zone for the duplexes that I stated if council desires, it could eliminate, modify, or change the proposed standard. So let's include flexibility to build in mind. I thank the City Council majority for adopting the new housing element back in May 2024. I want to emphasize, and that's really important for residents to know, that we were not in compliance and had lost control because of the previous council majority. Facts don't lie. People do. Thank you, Majority Council, and I urge all City Council to strengthen the zoning and go with staff recommendation and bring our housing element in full compliance. And last, wishing everybody and all residents a great Fourth of July. Thank you.
Thank you, Claudio. Next, we have San Ar, followed by Rod Sinks, followed by Jun Jong Hughes. Welcome, San.
Evening, Mayor Mohan, City Council members, and Manager Wu. I would like to ask that you please not make any changes from what staff recommendation is. We have already gone above and beyond in meeting the needs of HCD. The HCD-approved housing element is conditional. It is conditional subject to the completion of rezoning. If we start to make changes in our zoning standards and our codes that are significantly different from what were the initial drafts that were proposed, we run the risk of starting another review cycle. Starting another review cycle could extend builder's remedy in Cupertino. Perhaps that is the real goal of all of these late-breaking comments. All of these comments could have been received during the extended review window that we had. Why were these comments not raised during the review window that ran for months? There were many, many community meetings attended by the same set of people. None of these comments were made at that point. Instead, it had to wait for the rezoning with the Planning Commissioner sitting at a Holsville in New York to actually make these comments coming out of nowhere all of a sudden. There is one thing in common with all the comments you've received today. That is, all of these people are basically reading off the same set of talking points. You've got a coordinated attempt to make this change in a city where 65% are Asian demographic and hesitate to speak in front of you. So if you're hearing one set of voices, it is a community that is fluent, that is articulate, that can speak, and is not shy to speak in front of you. The voice you're not hearing is the 65% demographic of Cupertino, 45% of Cupertino is first-gen immigrants, most of whom might be hesitant to speak in front of you. But please don't forget the silent majority. Approve with no change what has been proposed.
Thank you. That is your time. Next, we have Rod Sinks, followed by Jun Jong Hughes, followed by Venkatesan Ranganathan. Welcome, Rod.
Thank you very much. Hello, Council. As a former Council member and current FUHSD trustee, speaking on my own behalf, I appreciate the need to make thoughtful decisions on the zoning. Retaining the city's authority on land use requires that the city make meaningful efforts toward housing production, and zoning is a key tool to that end. I am broadly supportive of measures.
Rod, we're having a little bit of difficulty hearing you. It's clogged.
Let's see if this works. I am broadly supportive of measures that will allow Cupertino to generate more inshallah housing in all income levels, particularly for those in this middle-income level. And I also recognize that the city must approach rezoning with care toward current residents. For example, a 20-story building towering over an R1 neighborhood that dramatically changes the viewshed from that neighborhood is bound to be counterproductive, igniting community pushback. So balance is needed, for sure, and retaining control, as a prior speaker said, is very important. You have a number of letters from organizations that have real expertise in this very technical area, all asking you to relax certain standards for the end of increasing production. You also have my email with some of my specifics that I can support. I note that both CUSD and FUHSD would benefit from relaxed standards that would increase housing production and generate more students for both of those institutions. And I think we should support our schools in making sure they're strong. As again, I'm speaking on my own behalf, but I am a FUHSD trustee, and I've seen firsthand the impact that lack of students is having in our school systems. Good luck as you deliberate, and thank you, and happy Fourth.
Thank you, Rod. Next, we have Jun Jong Hughes, followed by Venkatesan Ranganathan, followed by Gori Chala. Welcome, Jun.
Thank you for the helpful comment. Goodbye, Sean, usually, but, or, you can shout my name. I'm a former resident. I grew up in Cupertino. I lived here during the pandemic and really care about the future of the city. And I broadly endorse and recommend a lot of the highly detailed and thoughtful recommendations that were made in the most recent Cupertino for All letter that was issued at the City Council meeting. And broadly, we would just encourage Council and everyone involved in this process to remember that we are creating the building blocks for a city for the next, you know, cycle, not just the next cycle really, but really the foundation of a city's future. And the high cost of pricing, well, sorry, the high cost of housing, while certainly there are macroeconomic things out of our control, the exclusionary principles and the restrictions and the parking standards are choices. And in many ways, it's a choice that we have made to exclude our teachers, our firefighters, our service workers, our students, our former residents, our children from being able to come back home. And I think it's a choice that we have the ability to change, and this is a moment to do it. So. to change, and this is a moment to do it. So thank you all for your work, and up to the end of the comment.
Thank you. Next, we have Venkatesan Ranganathan, followed by Gori Chala, followed by Call-in user two. Welcome, Venkatesan.
Can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay. Good evening. My name is Venkatesan Ranganathan. I've been a Cupertino resident for more than around 15 years. So good evening, Council and city staff and manager. I support the staff recommendation without any changes to be adopted. You have heard from many people on the positives of the balanced approach. So do not increase the maximum floors to seven, changing the city's staff recommendations. Do not reduce parking requirements, then it would be difficult. This would become a parking jungle. It will basically make living here hard for people. Do not increase the floor area issue above 55%. So just after a lot of hard work, the proposal has come from the staff. And as a council which touted that they would read the staff recommendations as the expert recommendations, I would expect you to accept it without and then approve it as given by the HCD. Thank you.
Thank you. Next, we have Gori Chala, followed by Call-in user two. Welcome, Gori.
Hi. Can you hear me?
Yes, we can.
Good evening. My name is Gori Chavla. I want to talk about the rezoning policies that the staff has put forth for recommendation. First, I want to start by saying that our housing element has been adopted, but that state certification is at risk if we do not appropriately approach these rezonings. A lot of people are trying to push these rezonings through and just get it over with. That is how we get the builder's remedy in our city. We need to do these rezonings correctly the first time so that we can continue to impact the buildings and developments that are in our city. A lot of people are commenting on how this seems rushed, but this is the implementation of the housing element. After we've laid the groundwork for these projects, we need to have proper rezonings so that these projects are actually built and not just laid to rest. So I want to say that this is not rushed. We're approaching rezoning, and we are adding comments and suggestions that will make for more inclusionary rezonings for income levels of all type rather than restrictive rezoning that puts our housing element projects at risk of being taken away by HCD. I've sent in a detailed letter to council with recommendations for these rezonings that I really hope you all will consider. But of those, the notable ones are removing the five-story limit so that there is freedom in the development in R4 zoning, which is slated to become one of the most popular zonings in Cupertino based off of this housing element. Thank you.
Thank you, Gori. And our final individual requesting to speak before the nine-minute cutoff is Call-in user two. Welcome. I see you've unmuted yourself, so you should be able to speak. And now you have muted yourself.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Yeah, councils and members, actually, I need something indirect, but I think probably somehow related. And on the city, this city is unique from other cities. They protect blackmail and backstabbing. That's one of the reasons our legal law is taking away, taking down trials without notice. And as a single parent, we actually do run out to people because we don't want to be in a welfare. What's happened to them and push to expression and alcoholics, all this stuff like that, is not solving for the housing situation. We back up those squatters. And it's not because you don't want those people in the city anyway. It doesn't matter how many houses you are building up. Anyway, they are not qualified for that either. By supporting this blackmailing and backstabbing, a lot of homeowners like us will solve some problems for the city and some rooms out, but they're just so afraid to do so. So I just want to point this out. And so I think it's not just zoning alone, but need to solve other things and utilize other channels and to work together on this housing issue. So for that, I just kind of made it back to you. And also, I mentioned before, and then to use the law by to vitally address it, and I hope the city can stop doing that. Thank you.
Okay, Mayor, and that is the final speaker for this item requesting to speak within the allotted nine-minute cutoff.
Thank you. Thank you to everyone who participated in the public comments, those in person here at the community hall, as well as those on Zoom. It takes effort, and it takes time to do these things, and we appreciate it. Now, let's come back to the council. We didn't have that first round of questions for the staff. So let's start with the five-minute discussion, and if we could limit it, and then we will come back with a motion, and then we will have more time. Let me start off by asking Councilmember Chow to make her comments.
Thank you. Thank you, Pugh and Luke, for really great work in summarizing all the issues that Planning Commission has raised, even though the ones that didn't have a motion provide your professional opinion. So in your professional opinion, if we just adopt the staff recommendation today, would our housing element be fully compliant with all state law and all requirements of the HCD?
Yeah, the staff recommendation was based on complying with HCD, so I would say yes to that question.
Great, thank you. And then, in your professional opinion, if we adopt the staff recommendation today, would our housing element be fully compliant with affirmatively furthering fair housing requirements by the state law and HCD?
Yes, those requirements are part of the housing element itself, so yes.
Thank you. That's comforting to know. Even though I will still be considering some addition, but it's good to know, even if we don't make any change, we are safe in that regard. And so, next question is actually from a question, I am sharing my screen. It's a screenshot from the Planning Commission meeting. Someone asked about this table, 19.28, where it seems different standards are applied between R1E and R1I versus R1A. And the request was to include R1A so that the same standard applies. So is that a reasonable request?
Yes, and I believe the Planning Commission adopted that unanimously. It was related to maintaining the front step, but yes, for R1.
Okay, great, because you were saying the staff recommendation was the same as the Planning Commission, but it's adding this one.
Correct, yes.
Okay, great. Good to know. And then, next question is, I think you are saying R2 zoning is not within the scope today, but then you are also recommending, there is a 200 square foot difference between the units in a duplex. Isn't that the R2 standards or is not? I'm a little confused on that.
That's actually in the definition section of the zoning code. So it's when you would say, look up the word duplex, that definition applies to duplex.
So we already have the 200 square foot standard, right?
No, we do not. Right now, we do not have that. We have, it says the units need to be comparable. And because that is not objective, not something you could quantify, that was why we had proposed.
And this is not in the staff recommendation currently?
The 200 square, the 200 square feet is in the staff recommendation.
Is in the staff recommendation, okay. So if we want to relax that, we could.
Yes, that is not required. It was just.
But it's better to have some standard, yeah. Okay. So in case someone uses R2 standard on one of these corner lot, R1 lot, and it does not meet, somehow they couldn't fit three, three parking, the minimum parking requirement that's in the staff recommendation, what process they have to apply for variance so they can reduce the parking standard?
So you're saying if they wanted to have a duplex in R1 zone?
A duplex, mhm. But then they couldn't meet the parking requirement. Is there a way for them to request variance so they can reduce the standard?
There's always a variance process for any deviation from the code standard.
So they can apply for that if necessary.
You could apply, and we would have to be able to make the findings in order to grant it.
Okay, great. And question about the side setback. Thank you for the nice chart. You mentioned the front and back, rear setback. How about left and right? If a single-family home happens to be adjacent to mixed use that's on the side, not in the back, any setback requirement for those?
I'm not sure what zoning district, because we have multiple zoning districts that have different setbacks, so I wasn't sure which zoning district you were referring to. Was it the R4 slides that showed the larger building?
Yeah, the one that you should, R4. Yeah, if somebody is next to R4 zone but on the side, not in the rear. Would there be any sort of setback?
Yeah, on the sides, at the lower level, let's say they're proposing the multi-story building. The lower level would be 10 feet from the property lines on the side. And then if it were to go a story higher than the existing building, you have an additional 10 feet. So say you have a, now, we're showing it. So say you have a two-story building, you could have two levels on the new building within 10 feet of the property line. Any stories above that have to have an additional setback.
Oh, this is a side.
Right, that's the side. So pretend you're looking at the front of the building, and those are the two sides.
Okay, great. Thank you.
Okay, any other comments? Let me start by asking you, Luke and Pugh. There have been, we've read all the emails that came, and, you know, basically two positions. One, don't make any changes, and the others, make changes where appropriate. So one, and I think this is a misconception, and you can correct me if it's not, that HCD will reject the housing element because it's statutorily approved. It will reject it if we make any changes. And I don't think that's accurate. Can you elaborate on that?
Correct, yeah. Just to say, the housing element was adopted on May 14th. That's not being considered tonight. What we need to do through the rezoning is be able to implement, essentially show we're complying with the housing element that's always been, that's been adopted. The rezoning needs to be able to enable that housing element and all of its policies to occur. What staff's original proposal was, was we were trying to keep it sort of at the minimum level to comply. So we're confident that what we had proposed would get us to compliance. I think the issues that have been raised would be furthering, again, housing production. So the stance HCD typically has is, you know, that what you're doing is a minimum. You can go beyond that. What you can't do is go less. Like, for instance, we couldn't have an R4 zoning district we were just looking at where we're talking about a five or six-story building. We wouldn't be able to propose a standard, say like a two- or three-story building, because we'd essentially be limiting housing. It wouldn't be realistic. We're saying we're going to have 50 to 80 units per acre. You have to have a building that could accommodate that. So if you want to go beyond in furtherance of getting housing production or creating affordable housing, that you can do. You can't pull back where your zoning would be inconsistent with your housing element. Therefore, you'd have an issue with HCD. So I don't, staff's recommendation doesn't have that issue, and I don't think the proposals to go further would have that issue either. Since none of these are addressing the housing element, they're the zoning changes.
Right. Thank you. One question. In your opinion, you have your original recommendations, and then you made a few tweaks to your recommendations as it stands now. Would you agree that the changes that you have made are not hugely substantive changes, that the comments that you're getting about increasing the FAR slightly or the lot coverage or removing, you know, staying with the height density but removing the story restriction and the parking? Would you, in your opinion, is that considered major substantive changes, or are these easily sort of doable and sort of fits into your staff recommendations?
I don't think any of the changes constrain housing, and that would be HCD's concern, is that if the changes were limiting housing, or contrary to any of the policies or strategies we propose, I think that would be an issue. Whether there's a five or a six-story building, that's not going to be a concern to HCD. I think their concern is that you are creating a zoning district that will allow for higher-density development. Whether it's five stories or six stories, either of those is going to work. You can't realistically get more than six stories within 70 feet, and since 70 feet appears to be acceptable, I think it really comes down to, is it five or six stories? Similarly, with the parking issue, by reducing parking, you're not constraining housing. The floor area ratio standard for missing middle, again, I think what HCD wanted to see was that we have a missing middle policy that's been adopted. The FAR standard that we proposed was really just to try to ensure compatibility with single-family development. So that's not changing the R2 standard. It would just be applicable to R1 properties using the R2 standard. But again, it's not a substantive change. I don't think this is something HCD is looking at. Their issue was that we have a policy to address missing middle housing, which we have.
Great, thank you. That clarifies a lot of things. Councilmember Wei?
Okay, a couple of questions. Luke and Pugh, thank you for your work. And I understand from what you're saying, let's make one thing clear. Our housing elements has been approved by the Council 311 on May 14th, but this is all contingent upon our rezoning is being accepted by HCD?
Yes, that is correct, because, well, really for two reasons. The city was over a year past the certification deadline, so we're required by state law to get our rezoning in place in order to have a valid housing element. We also have a stipulated judgment that gave us 120 days post-adoption to get our zoning in place. So that would put us, I think, to September 12th. So we really have those competing issues where our housing element is not completely done until we get the rezoning done for those two reasons.
Thank you. So I understand all the proposals are consistent with state laws, and the affirmative furthering fair housing is incorporated in there. What I really am very concerned is any new restrictions that's added. Would HCD consider that restraining, more restraining on our policies? Or, because I've seen, for example, the R2, the comparable size with 200 square feet, that's a new restriction. And the R3, the coverage loss is 40%, that's a new restriction. Do you think HCD would take any new restrictions as impeding the housing elements comparability or, you know?
No, I don't think anything that staff proposed, the 55 FAR, that would be seen as a restriction.
Okay.
Um, you know, it, it, again, it's a standard that we thought would ensure compatibility, but it's kind of the, I don't think anything that staff has proposed, nor the comments of people who are saying you could remove these standards, I don't think either of them is a constraint.
Okay. So, um, the one thing I did not get is the R3 minimum lot size standard. What, what is it, the R3 minimum lot size standard?
The, there is no proposed change. Right now, it's 9,300 square feet. So there is no proposed change to that standard by staff or any reference in the housing element to altering it?
Understand. And then I noticed one of the criteria is, is to, um, you know, um, to add it so that it's for internal consistency. So there's one thing I noticed is the internal site, um, uh, setback for single-family home is six, and then you propose five, uh, six, for five, but you propose six for the R2 overlay. Is there a reason for that?
I'm not sure what we, what we were referring to with the six feet.
Right, because R2 zone, uh, the single-family is, is, is six, but somehow the, you're proposing five for the overlay?
If I may, um, Councilmember Wei-
Is there any reason for that?
Uh, no. So, so the missing middle policy against states and the housing element that the R2 zoning standards would be used for any duplexes developed on properties that could develop duplexes in the R1 zoning district, and the R2 zoning standards require a, um, a, a minimum of a six-foot setback on the first floor, um, for those duplexes. And that's just the standard that would be utilized, uh, for those structures as well.
So you've seen the existing R2 and overlaying to the, uh, the, the-
Correct. Yeah, it would be a bigger structure than the, the single-family homes than the R1 zoning district would allow. And so, as a result, to maintain that compatibility with, um, the neighboring structures and allowing it to be a little bit setback further, uh, from the single-family homes.
Okay, okay. So I just want to know the reason why, because, um, you know, it's, internal consistency is very important. All right, thank you.
Vice Mayor Fruen?
So I'm gonna do, uh, address a few things, um, off the bat. There were a number of allegations that somehow you might feel unsupported if we engage in our policymaking role and relax a few standards. Would you feel unsupported?
No. I think, like I said, I think most of the issues we're discussing are not putting constraints on housing. So it's really, I think, a matter of choice and preference.
Very good. One of the things that, that particularly concerns me as someone who, who works in policy for another city, and who has followed the housing element process since its very beginning, is that HCD is not always necessarily terribly consistent in how it applies a number of these standards, and in particular is very, very responsive to advocacy from housing advocacy organizations. In fact, there's a requirement that the city engage with them, correct?
Yes, throughout this process. That is a requirement.
Okay, and we have letters from the Housing Action Coalition, Silicon Valley at Home, Cupertino for All, all of which count as such, that are asking us to do a little more than what we've already done. Yes?
Yeah, that's exactly how I would characterize it.
Okay. Um, because what I've seen elsewhere, in particular in San Jose, was, you know, a lot of very competent staff who sat in, you know, a box explaining to their council, yes, we know that this is gonna be accepted by HCD. We've been told we're gonna get a thumbs-up letter. And council accepted all of that, moved along, and then they didn't because housing advocacy organizations went and said, hey, you know, there's still problems with this thing. You need to change a few things. And it took them an extra six months. And I'm anxious to not repeat that. I, I, I hate to bring up trauma for your friend from Placeworks. He knows this well, because it, it happened six times with South Pasadena, sorry. Um, but, you know, all we have to do is go a tiny bit further, I feel, in order to satisfy this desire. And I think the desire is perfectly reasonable. These are modest changes, and they're clearly designed around trying to make things like, um, the R4 zoning district capable of producing something other than just expensive housing, right? If we're, if we're producing things that are primarily five stories, or only allowing five stories, then you are precluding the ability to have, um, frankly, just a pure housing development. You would have a lot of amenity-rich stuff at the, the bottom. I believe that's what, what our friend from Placeworks described it as at the, the Planning Commission. Is that correct?
Yeah, I think the attempt was that you would have more ability to attract commercial or engage that in a non-residential space, is what you'd get at the ground floor.
Yeah, we would, we would be driving it all in that direction. And I, I think that all we need to do is let that one go a little bit. That way, as an individual development comes forward, they've got a little bit more freedom as to what they wanna do with that space. So if we remove the, the story restriction, not changing any of the height, remove the story restriction, then we can get occasional six-story developments. Seems perfectly reasonable. And then we're not having to worry about where we're going to find sites in the next housing, uh, cycle. Um, we might get a little bit more than, than what we were, um, planning out of this space, and I think that's totally appropriate. Um, and I, I think that the, the primary issue that I'm seeing with the missing middle strategy is that if we were to follow the, the existing staff recommendation, that I, I don't really see why anyone would choose to develop under these standards compared to, say, just building a single-family residence and an ADU. Because the ADU will not have to pay any fees. It's exempt. But a second principal dwelling would. And so if we allow a slightly greater development envelope, doesn't have to be as large as, um, say, a townhouse, but a slightly larger, uh, development envelope than, than what would otherwise be allowed for a single-family home, I think, then we, we finally get there. I, I am curious, though, as to, um, why there was no change in the lot coverage for the duplex overlay, because duplex would only be allowed to develop at 40% FA, I'm sorry, 40% lot coverage, and a, a single-family home can do 45.
I think we just kept the R2 standard for that at 40%.
Okay, because it, it seems to me that that, that sort of fosters more expensive housing topologies, because you've gotta go up, and it's, you know, one and a half times more expensive to build a second story than it is to build just at the, the ground level. So I would, I would think that some expansion of the lot coverage would be appropriate. Um, I will continue my comments later.
Okay. Thank you, Vice Mayor. Uh, Councilmember Moore?
Five minutes. Um, so I noticed there are, uh, there's a section that talks about Government Code 65759, and that, um, this is exempt from SEQA. And, um, so that would be because of the YMB lawsuit against the city and the stipulated judgment, um, essentially because of our tardiness resulted in, uh, the, um, election, if you will, of, uh, that, that judgment to say that we would not, um, have an EIR. Um, but when we look at the results of the environmental assessment, um, we do have significant and unavoidable air quality impacts, um, which, which are indicated, um, such as, I know, people are concerned about the environment. Is this gonna be helping the environment? Well, it's gonna be generating, according to our report, 82,189 metric tons of carbon dioxide annually. Uh, PM 2.5 is three times the Bay Area air quality management threshold. Your reactive organic gases are seven times the threshold, and your PM 10 and your PM 2.5 are also exceeding the threshold. Where I'm curious is, did you include the 2 million square feet of office at Valco when this, uh, study was conducted? I'm gonna guess not, because you would've just been including the housing expected to be built. Would that be correct?
Actually, I can take that question. So the 2 million square feet of office for Valco was already analyzed in the, um, with the 2015, 2014 general plan update. And so as a result, because this analysis looked at it as a supplemental, like, it looked, it built on top of what was already analyzed, that 2 million square feet was already included.
Okay, so in the previous study, it was also, for noise and air quality, significant unavoidable impacts with mitigation, um, even at that point. And I could not locate, I did find the, the previous, um, previous cancer risk in the old EIR report. Um, I could not locate the cancer risk on, in the, in the current one. I would assume it's going to end up being higher than what we were looking at, um, before. So, um, I am concerned about, about this because we do have an obligation for the health, safety, and welfare of our community. Um, with regards to builder's remedy, um, builder's remedy is, excuse me, currently written, um, has a 20% inclusionary element to it. And, uh, the city is only asking for 15% if it's for rental units, and it's 20% if it is for sale. Um, do we have, um, how, or I should say, how many current builder's remedy projects do we have that are actually meeting the requirements, uh, for their application?
There's only one builder's remedy application that's on file, and I believe they had the 20% low income that's required for being a builder's remedy project.
Okay, and why haven't we seen more since we, we met, um, in May and approved the housing element? Are they not allowed to continue to turn in these applications, or what's, what seems to have stopped it?
I don't know why we haven't seen them. They still would be able to do so because we don't have a completed housing element yet.
Okay. Um, do you think it might be because right now what's being built are single-family homes and townhomes primarily, because that's what's penciling out?
It certainly could be that. I mean, the ta-, townhome development is by far the leading inquiry. So that, that could affect why we have not seen more of the applications.
Okay, thank you. Um, and this last question is more for our city attorney. Uh, it seems as though the zoning portion not following, um, SEQA is kind of an uncharted territory. Um, could the city have challenged the stipulation from the judge?
Uh, the city, uh, agreed to the stipulation, so, you know, we would've waived any right to challenge it by entering into the settlement agreement.
So we could have alternatively challenged it?
We certainly would've had the option to, to litigate the case that was brought against the city, um, you know, based on city council direction. The city, this, we chose not to.
Yeah, thank you.
Thank you. I'm not seeing any other, uh, questions from council members.
If I could have more time?
Ah, I spoke too soon. Councilmember Chow?
Yeah. I do have more question if I, um, allow-
We'll give you two minutes, Councilmember.
So, uh, let me find my question. Okay. So there was a mention of, um, by right approval for any site that's 20 units per acre and 20% of low, um, low-income, very low-income. And so that would be by right approval, uh, administrative. If they applied density bonus law to waive site or height standard, would they be still qualified for by right approval?
Yes, it needs to be, if they are a priority housing site and they meet the threshold of 20 units per acre and 20% available to low income, yes.
So even if they don't comply with standards, um, because of the density bonus law, it will be administrative approval without public hearing and so on?
Well, there, there would be an administrative hearing or hearing before the Planning Commission based on the size of the project, but, but it would be a ministerial project-
So any of the high limit, uh, setback limits we are setting today, they can waive them and get a by right approval?
Correct. Nothing has changed with density bonus law.
Okay. Um, so it's mentioned that, um, so 55%, um, so the, we are not doing anything for the R2 standard, duplex R2 standard today, but there are some new standards for duplex in R1?
That is correct, yes. No changes to R2.
This is a little confusing. So the 55% of FAR is suggested for duplex in R1, um, because we are adding, because this is likely a lot right next to, you know, existing R1 neighborhood.
Correct. The R2 has no FAR standard.
And you mentioned this is a common standard that, like, Mountain View, uh, uses?
Mountain View and Sunnyvale have the standard, I believe, for their R2 zone. We do not have an FAR standard at all for our R2 zone currently.
For their R2 zone, they also have a limit of 55%?
Yes.
Okay, that's good to know. So it's not really unreasonable. Um, good suggestion. So this is all in the staff recommendation already?
Correct.
And then in the request for in-, to increase building height, um, for the, I think, townhome mixed zoning, you are mentioning it would require general plan amendment, which is not on the agenda today?
That is, right, that is correct, because it would be over 30 feet, and the general plan specifies 30 feet.
So we cannot do that today?
Correct. Without a general plan amendment, otherwise we'd create an inconsistency.
Okay, thank you. Okay, Vice Mayor Fruen, uh, you had a comment, and after that, I'd like to entertain a motion.
Sure. So I just wanted to, to point out as well, you know, we, we've made mention of Mountain View and, uh, Sunnyvale and so forth. Mountain View, um, I looked at their, their ordinance, and I asked my, um, friend on the Mountain View City Council, Lucas Ramirez, if he, uh, had any information with regard to when they last went and updated it. Apparently it was in 2013. Um, they do have the same parking standard that, um, their resident, their R1 zones have, so it's only, you know, one unit of, of parking, uh, enclosed, one exposed per, um, per dwelling unit, which is basically a four-car parking space, a two-car garage, two additional parking spaces, and a front yard setback. Um, so we would hardly be alone if we moved to that standard, and it would look just like any other single-family home in the neighborhood typically. Um, the other thing that I did wanna point out is that our, our neighbor immediately to the south, um, in both its R1 zoning district and its R2 zoning district, so both for duplexes and single-family homes, has no floor area ratio standard and has no lot coverage standard. They instead rely on, on different standards, like, uh, front and back setbacks, side yards. Um, they even allow you to go up to, uh, 35 feet and have apparently two and a half stories, the half-story being a, a sort of, um, you know, habitable gable, for lack of a better term. You know, I just wanna make sure that, that it's clear that, that we would hardly be unusual if we went a little further than, you know, our, our neighbors to the north. Instead, what they choose to do, and this might be something that, that you consider in the course of your, um, objective design standards update, is that they create a, a series of carrots, so there's a lot of permitting relief for you if you choose to develop within a certain building envelope instead. And maybe that's something that we'll want to consider in the future.
Thank you. Uh, Councilmember Wei, uh, these are sort of the last comments before we go to a motion, so, uh, two minutes, Councilmember Wei.
I was just gonna ask you. Um, so I am very curious. I think this question is for our consultant, that what happened in San Jose? I mean, I, I, I get it. Um, Luke says if with this minimum standards, we think we have, or, you know, the staff think we qualified for, um, HCD approval, but could there be a incident that happened to San Jose that they didn't get it? And if we want to 100%, 20% make sure that we get it, is it, Luke and Pew, you're not offended, if we feel that it is really have a little bit more FFR and have a little bit more for the middle site, middle, you know, missing middle, it doesn't hurt our chances of HCD's approval? Can we have the consultant pitching on that?
I don't think our consultant is gonna be able to answer what happened in San Jose since they weren't working on that, um, but it could be a long shot. You never know. Um, I think to answer the bigger question again, is I think the staff's original recommendation, we fully intended to get the housing element completed and have that implemented. The other items that are essentially furthering housing even more so, they're not a constraint. It's certainly not going to, I think, have an impact at all in, in terms of HCD's- It's certainly not going to, I think, have an impact at all in terms of HCD's determination. I think the element of the code HCD is most concerned about was our by right provision, was to get that correct to show that we're complying in trying to further our, getting our priority housing sites developed. So it's really an option at this point.
All right, thank you.
I think we are done with everyone's comments.
I'm happy to make a motion.
You are ready to make a motion?
Yeah.
Okay, Councilmember Chow, go ahead and make a motion.
So I'd like move to move staff recommendation plus maximum 70-foot height limit in R4 zone, so that means removing the five-story limit. And also I'd like to consider 20% difference between units in a duplex, which means maybe about 400 square foot for a 2000 square foot home. So there, it's slightly allow a little bit more variance, but not without limit. I thought this is still comparable between the units. Is that within the scope of today's agenda? I'd like to double check.
I would say yes.
Because that would be changing the definition of duplex.
Correct. You would be substituting 20% for 200 square feet?
Yeah, would that be?
That would seem fine.
Okay, so that's my motion. So making more, minor changes, I hope.
Okay. Councilmember Moore.
For purposes of discussion, I'll second that motion.
Any discussions? Vice Mayor Fruen?
Yeah, so I guess the things that I would most want to alter here, and I'll see if you're open to a friendly amendment, Councilmember Chow, is that I frankly don't think that we need to change the definition of a duplex at all. I do regard this as a new constraint, if only because it creates legal non-conforming uses in certain parts of the city. And right now, under the HAA, if you were to bring an application for a new duplex, it would be unenforceable. So I, I think we do create a new constraint with this. I certainly prefer the notion of some sort of proportional difference between the two as opposed to a flat 200 square feet. But at this, at this point in time, I think that it would be better to simply strike the restriction altogether because that is the current state of the law. I also think that the floor area ratio in strategy HE136 is not sufficient to actually achieve its goal. At 55%, I don't see anybody building a duplex when you can simply build a, a single-family home and an ADU and pay less in fees. So I think it would be more beneficial to the city and ensure that people actually use this, this strategy if we increase that floor area ratio to 65%. It's modest, it's less than a townhome.
So, can I respond?
Yes, please do.
So the, since the duplex, the standard for duplex is not in scope today, and that would not create inconsistency because duplex in R1 would have a standard and we...
No, duplex in, so a regular duplex would have no floor area ratio. So if you wanted it to be consistent with existing R2, then you would have no, and I would be open to that as well.
65%. And design standards is coming back later this year. Would this be included in that consideration?
We don't have the full scope for, for the objective design standards in terms of looking at zoning standards. There, there's kind of a fine line between what's design and what's a development standard. This is a development standard, what we're talking about tonight.
So when that comes, we might consider duplex standards, duplexing R1 standards and floor area ratio, we could consider those at that time, too?
I mean, I would say the objective design standard is more, it, it's tailored to higher-density, multifamily and mixed-use projects. I think if we were to look at specific residential zoning districts such as R2 standards, obviously that's something that the council could consider, but I think that would be a related but different project.
I see, good to know. I, so the design standard that's upcoming is likely for the R4 and multifamily projects, not for our duplex? Okay, so, I think this is a new thing, so it's better to introduce a new thing gradually. So maybe, I think 55% is the staff recommendation makes sense, so I hope to not change that. And for duplex, the current language is comparable, which is, one could say 200, one could say even 100, it's comparable.
That's the point, it's not enforceable.
So that's why I would like to have an objective standard for that, and I don't want it to be, I think 200 square foot is a little too restrictive, so I thought 20% makes more sense, but some objective standard is better.
Okay, so are you declining my request then?
So I'm declining on your request. Thank you.
All right, in that case, then I'll, I'll make a substitute motion.
Okay, go ahead, Vice Mayor.
I will send it to the clerk in a moment. I've sent it, let me know when you get it.
I will show my screen. You should be seeing it momentarily, there we go.
All right, so I move the staff recommended action with the following modest modifications reflected from in the public comment to the proposed municipal code amendments in attachment A. One, that with respect to the new R4 zone, that the story restriction be removed. Two, that the change in the definition of a duplex under municipal code section 19.08.030 be removed. Three, that with respect to the duplex overlay implementing strategy HE1.3.6. One, that the 55% floor area ratio be changed to 65. Two, that the existing constraint of 1.5 enclosed and 1.5 exposed parking spaces per dwelling unit be reduced to one enclosed and one exposed to align with neighboring single-family residential standards. Three, that interior side yard setbacks be set at a flat five feet to align with minimum single-family R1 standards. And four, that the lot coverage standard be increased to 50%, and that with respect to R3 zones for developments up to four units, that the permissible lot coverage be expanded to 50%. I further move that we direct the city manager to align and harmonize these standards in the upcoming objective design standards for our zoning districts with a focus on feasibility and architectural flexibility.
Okay, so that's the substitute motion from Vice Mayor Fruen. Councilmember Wei?
I'll second it.
Okay, second it, and then we can have a brief discussion, yes. Councilmember Moore.
I have a slightly different question I would like to have addressed. With regards to future projects...
We'll go with two minutes, sorry.
With regards to future projects, because we just have an environmental assessment, so we're in this kind of untested area of, I'm gonna guess, trying to tear off of an environmental assessment for future projects, but would it be that any project that is one of the housing element sites moving forward, that they could just use a categorical exemption and bypass SEQA entirely as, as an infill development?
I, I wouldn't necessarily assume that for every site, but certainly infill, infill development exemption would be a possibility. There are other sites that would, depending on their affordability level, would be eligible for by right approval, you know, so there would also be, you know, that would be a process that would not be subject to SEQA either. So it, so there, there, so there are a number of ways where the project would either be exempt or not subject to SEQA because it would be a ministerial project.
Can you think of any of these projects that are within the housing element that actually would need to go through a SEQA process? I didn't hear, and it sounded like there were the ones that were infill, and then there's the ones that are just, they're ministerial by virtue of what they are. So it doesn't sound like anything has to go through SEQA at all.
You know, I wouldn't make that assumption at this time.
If it's a housing element site and it's not mixed-use, for instance, what, what would flag it? Like, why, why wouldn't it just simply use a categorical exemption?
Yeah, I mean, I think, I think we would have to, to look at, look at the, the project on a project-by-project basis.
Yeah, okay, because we're, we're already seeing the infill development categorical exemption being used. In fact, we've got one that's got an open geotracker case on it that was an infill development site, took a categorical exemption, and it's having environmental cleanup.
Yeah, I, I would agree generally that, yeah, that, that more and more sites are being developed either as, as ministerial projects or as exempt from SEQA. So, so that, that's a general trend that I think would be true, sort of, housing element or not.
Okay, and public health suffers. Thank you.
Councilmember Wei?
Yeah, may we put the, the substitute motion on, on the screen, please?
Yes.
So I want to say why I second it. You know, when I was elected mayor, I said three things. I like to, you know, work for residents at three levels, our current residents, our day residents, and our future residents. And I do believe that we are obligated to serve our current residents. That's why our housing elements has a concentration on corner lots adjacent to retails, along major boulevard, to maintain neighborhood integrity. And I believe all these standards are actually, they have some adjacent to neighborhood, but mostly they are corner lots adjacent to retail and along major boulevards. And all these items, I look at as one important thing, is to conform with internal consistency. I do believe that, you know, a lot of things that we're doing here is to make sure that R2 overlay that is doable, because R2 overlay, if it's too restricted, people can just choose to do a single-family home with 380s. And that doesn't make sense for us to push these corner lots or adjacent to retail to do single-family home with 380s. By relaxing all these, you're going, we're giving people who want to build duplexes and fulfill the middle class or the middle, missing middle, and also affirmatively fairing affordable housing, that it is really a good strategy for us to not, to be so restrictive. I'm always believing the most restrictive is not the most beneficial. Giving owners and developers that flexibility will give our community a much better vibrant community that brings economic viability and also brings that internal consistency. So I'm willing to second this, because if you are for our teachers, our firefighters, our service workers, our students, our seniors, I think we need to have standards that not as restrictive and promote smaller and affordable units instead of a big home with ADUs. So I am very happy with these relaxed, and according to Luke and Pew, HCD is not gonna look at this saying that, oh, you're, you're not conforming. Actually, this probably gives them a better understanding where Cupertino is gonna be inclusive, welcoming our middle, you know, missing middle classes, working, welcoming our teachers, firefighters, our seniors, our service workers, our students to live among us. So that is my reason why I do believe these changes really gives our city advantage. And this really still maintains our neighborhood integrity, because these are lots that's adjacent to busy streets or corner lots or adjacent to retail.
Thank you. I had a question, or can we get this, the Vice Mayor Fruen's motion back on the screen, please? So, so my question is, and, and this is to staff, as well as to you, Vice Mayor, if this is additional, these are additional items that we are placing on top of your staff recommendations. So, so my question is, if I, if I was a homeowner or a landlord, or, and if I didn't want, if I didn't, if I wanted to adhere to a more conservative standard, this will not, my understanding is this will not prevent me from doing that, because I can, I can have six parking spaces if I so choose, although your, your motion, I think, says four, but if I was, I, I would have that option, right? So all this is giving me is another option.
Yes, I believe this is setting a, a minimum standard. If you chose to have more, you could have more. So the way our parking standards are, they focus on what is minimally required. It doesn't put a cap on what you can have.
And, and similarly, number one, 55% floor area ratio be changed to 65. If I wanted to stay with 55, I could still do it.
Correct, the 65 would be a maximum, so anything under that you could do.
Okay. I don't want to belabor the point, but I think that's probably true of all the, all the items that you've listed here, and, and if you can confirm that, Luke or Pew.
Yeah, I, because through our discussion tonight, I don't see anything in the motion that could be seen as a constraint on housing, or is, you know, by and large, you're going with the staff recommendation that you're changing just these few items. And again, the, the only concern we have implementing through zoning is that we would be constraining housing in some way. These are not doing that.
Okay, so, so, so that's really important, and I think you phrased it well, Luke. By, by and large, we are staying with the staff recommendation.
Yes, I mean, I think we really have been down to talking about four or five points all night.
Okay.
It was a lot of comments, but not a lot of differences.
Great, thank you very much. Vice Mayor Fruen, you had the light, your light on before. Councilmember Chow?
So one of the reasons for my very serious concern about what HCD's actual view of us is stems from us being a jurisdiction that is known to them. That's how they describe us. And I see our friend from Placeworks laughing again. There's a reason why we're, we're known to them, and it's for comments like the, the following. This was from 2014 when that, the last housing element was adopted, from then Councilmember Mark Santoro, saying, "You should put the new housing where HCD will approve it, and you hope it's not going to get built." All of these sites that I picked last time were not built. And another council member at the time, who happens to be a friend of mine, said in response, "Oh, that's been a, a successful strategy in the past." We're, we're known to them because we've made fake policy in the past, and what I'm very anxious to make sure is the case is that we're not repeating that with this missing middle strategy. I want to make sure that it is actually actionable, that it fulfills its promise to affirmatively further fair housing, that it's not just an option for a homeowner, but that there's an actual incentive for you to go in this direction. And I think by relaxing these standards slightly and aligning it frankly more with the single-family neighborhoods in which they would sit, that we accomplish that goal. It also satisfies the demands of all of the housing advocates who have commented thus far. of all of the housing advocates who have commented thus far and who are probably the only people who can derail this process for us at this point. So, you know, I think that we've come a long, long way. I want to say, Councilmember Chow, I don't know how you're going to vote on this. I don't even know what you're gonna say in a few moments. But I really appreciate your willingness to work on the topic and even to consider some of the amendments earlier. The discussion that we've had today is a very different one from what I would have expected 16, 18 months ago. And I think that that says a lot. Thank you.
Final comments? Councilmember Chow?
Unfortunately, HCD's view of HCD, if that's really true, is totally mistaken since we have approved the five projects on all five housing element sites from the current cycle, and then we have over-delivered on the number of units from the current housing element. So a lot of news coverage on Cupertino is also unfortunately biased because of the one big developer has been trying to paint Cupertino in a very negative light. But Cupertino has been, not only current, prior councils have been pretty support, have hardly ever rejected a project proposal. And I'd like to thank the staff for your staff recommendation. You, with all your experience working with a lot of project applicants, we know that even with R1 current standards, there are humongous homes being proposed on R1 sites that our residents complain about. And then the staff has taken serious consideration of the community, whether standards could be accepted by the community, and really tried to make the recommendation to fit the current characteristic of Cupertino. I think if we want projects to be acceptable, we need to be sure that we don't go beyond what people expect. And I am very, it's unconscionable, an advocacy group has, who have no experience in building and planning, is trying to threaten the city to put our housing element compliance in danger by threatening that if we don't approve these additional requirements, we somehow will be in danger of our compliance. That's unconscionable. Anyone in Cupertino would do that. Thank you.
Okay, let's get back to the motion. Yes, we have a motion. We have a second. If everyone's clear about what the motion is, let's just go ahead and vote by lights. It's the substitute motion. That's right. We're okay? We don't need to see it on the screen? All right. Good. Let's vote by lights then.
The substitute motion carries with Chow and Moore voting no. Mayor, can we take a break?
Let's take a break.
Maybe a 10-minute break?
10-minute break.
Thank you.
Please. Thank you.